Go ahead and call this a regularly scheduled meeting of Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. Ask everyone to please stand. I'll ask an invitation and ask everyone to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us in this room. Dear Lord, thank you for our citizens, our staff, and our employees who work hard each and every day to make Jackson County a better place to live. Thank you for this great state of Florida in which we live. Thank you for Governor Ron DeSantis for attempting to enact policies that are beneficial, help make Florida a better place to live, a safer place to live, a better place to educate our children, and a better place to do business. Thank you for this great country, the United States of America. Thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy by being Americans. Help us to never take those freedoms for granted, dear Lord. Now guide us and direct us, help us to make decisions that are equally beneficial to all of our citizens. We pray this sings in your name, dear Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the ninth president of the Senate, and to the repose of what stands, one nation under God, and a beautiful, liberty, and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone to today's, this morning's meeting. We've got a couple of things I do want to point out. Ms. Daniels is not here with us this morning. She is on, on line, I guess you could say she's traveling. But Mr. Daniels is here to fill in for her. Also, at 10 o'clock, we've got a scheduled special meeting. So when we get close to that 10 o'clock time, I will probably adjourn our regular meeting, and we'll open up a special meeting. And then, once we conclude the special meeting, we'll go back into our regular scheduled meeting. So with that being said, we've got one change to the agenda. Mr. Daniels?
Yes, sir. We have one addition. It's number 15, request board approval of support, letter of support for Sunland Forensic Facility.
Okay, with that being said, shall we entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Mr. Peacock, second from Mr. Branch, any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, it stated please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving to section number one, which is recognitions, resolutions, and presentations. Item number one is board adoption of a proclamation declaring April Fair Housing Month. Mr. Daniels?
Yes, sir. So this proclamation allow April marks the anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, established to eliminate housing discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and nation, national origin to provide fair housing opportunities for all Americans. And I will read the proclamation for the record. Whereas April marks the anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1868, established to eliminate housing discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national origin to provide fair housing opportunities for all Americans. And whereas Jackson County is committed to providing fair housing opportunities to improve economic stability, community health, and human relations. And whereas Jackson County recognizes further efforts to enhance, to enforce local, state, and federal laws consistently, and enhance commitments to fair housing can be accomplished through ongoing partnerships with other government agencies, for-profit, nonprofit organizations, realtors, lenders, landlords, and others in the housing industry. And whereas Jackson County acknowledges that fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of all citizens and the provision of services to the community. And whereas, Jackson County encourages activities provided by private and public entities to educate and advocate for fair housing opportunities for all citizens and prospective residents. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, hereby proclaims the month of April 2024 as National Fair Housing Month.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Shall we entertain a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman, authorize you to sign it.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number two and three, we're going to do something a little different than what we've been doing. We've got recognition of years of service awards, and we've got three employees to recognize. And then, we also have recognition of the employees of the month. Instead of me coming down during the recognition of the years of service awards, Mr. Austin will introduce the department heads that are going to introduce those three. And we'll ask those that are in attendance to hang out for just a little bit for a picture. And then, we'll do the employee of the month, and then we'll get a picture of everybody. That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Austin, you want to?
So first, we have recognition of years of service, Lord. They may have first 15 years from their looking for the facility.
Morning. Come on. Good morning.
Morning. First, we have Angie Burks. Angie's being recognized for 20 years of service with the facility. The name Angie is Greek order for messenger of God. Angie is married to Rob. Angie and Rob have one son Hunter and daughter Macy. Angie enjoys taking vacations to the beach and going on their pontoon boat in their spare time. Angie came to us in 2004, was hired as the nursing supervisor, and has overseen several LPNs in the past 20 years. For her character quality, she chose patience, which is accepting difficult situations without giving a deadline to remove it. Angie has covered several occasions in the absence of other nurses when they're being off or in the hiring process while keeping up with her everyday duties to the best of her abilities. Angie demonstrated the character quality of patience and courage with me, that inmates' well-being is always a priority. Thank you, Angie, for your service.
Thank you.
Angie, thank you for your 20 years. If you would, hang out. Jamie, you've got the next one as well?
Yes, sir. Next, we have Cory Jones, being recognized for 15 years of service. Cory's a corporal with the facility, works in the classification department. The name Cory is Irish for the roots for Apollo. Cory is married to Shonda. Cory and Shonda have one son Dalton. Cory enjoys hunting, fishing, and grilling in his spare time. Cory came to us in 2009 after spending, after spending time with floor apartment corrections from 1998 to 2008. During Cory's time with the facility, has served in various positions in current sources of corporal and classification. For Cory's character quality, he chose initiative, which is recognizing doing what needs to be done before being asked to do so. Cory is constantly working throughout the day, utilizing all his work hours, making sure the duties in the classification department is handled in a timely manner. Cory has taken on new tasks of submitting daily and weekly annually reports to FTLD, and has handled the process extremely well. Cory's demonstration of character quality of initiative is encouraging me to never have to wait for Cory to complete the task. It's always handled in a timely manner.
You're good.
Thank you, Cory, for your time.
Cory, thank you so much for your 15 years of service, and congratulations. Hang out just for a second, and we've got one more employee, I think, to recognize, although I did not see Ms. Hines. So we'll, we'll, I tell you what we'll do. Let's get the years of service awards a picture. And we'll move forward with the employee of the month. Angie, no line. Please come forward. First of all, let me say on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, we're very appreciative of your years of service to the county. Very appreciative of the professionalism, the dedication, and the longevity that you show to corrections in Jackson County. And again, we should give you both a hand, including Deb, although she's not here.
Oh, there's Deb.
You made it. Deborah Hines, I've been recognized for 10 years.
10 years.
Yes.
10 years.
I've worked her stuff, and she's on the case.
Sure. So she won't go to personal.
So, yeah. Ms. Daniels is actually Deborah's supervisor. She's on your side, you're in the corner. So Deborah is named after her origin, meaning bee. In the Old Testament, the book of Judges, Deborah is a heroine and prophetess who leads the Israelites. When they are threatened by the enemy, Deborah has one thirteen dogs and four branches. He gives her manna, and I know he was there with her since she was very young. He is very important to the house, sister and brother, who are very dear to her. In her spare time, she likes gardening, watercolor painting, swimming, hiking. She loves a good ghost story. All over the world. She had two dogs and cats, reading papers, script, there he's, and a man. So it started her career as an elementary teacher. Deborah is an all-teacher in the university hall, and she started as a librarian and firm hand, and worked all areas of libraries before she made her way to Jackson County in 2014. As library director, she is responsible for overseeing the day-to-day operations of both branches of the library, including staffing, programming, and loading. For Deborah's character quality, Ms. Daniels chose joyfulness, not allowing unkind conditions to control her attitude. Deborah is consistently joyful, even in the face of difficult circumstances. When met with negative situations, she strives to find the positive and works in her person's main attitude with her own people and those around her. She deals with disgruntled patrons with a sense of problem, and does not allow their unkindness to cause her to waver in her positive outlook. Because of Deborah's commitment to joyfulness, the library has stayed on a new and innovative program to assist our citizens. Her positive attitude is a question in her staff and his success, the many projects that have been undertaken under pressure. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. And as I said to everybody, Angie and Cory, we certainly appreciate professionalism, the dedication to the county, and doing their job. And like, congratulations. So I'll put it.
Well, first, we're searching.
Yeah, I'll go as well.
You can get a little bit closer.
Again, congratulations. Appreciate. I want to hang out here for the next person. Who is Ms. Amber Barnes?
Yep. So Amber Barnes is being recognized as Employee of the Month for April 2024. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas Jackson County has established an Employee of the Month program to recognize one employee to represent the various departments. And whereas Amber Barnes began her employment with the county on March 27, 2007, she currently serves as Senior Planner for Community Development, and has been selected as Employee of the Month for April 2024 for the standards that she has displayed and the performance of her job duties. Whereas Amber demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces, and her loyalty to Jackson County is recognized by her coworkers. Amber exhibits exemplary customer service and leadership abilities. She is able to manage several projects at once and produce a high volume of work while providing great customer service to the public. Amber is always willing to go the extra mile to accomplish deadlines and assist other departments within community development. Amber is very thorough in her work and provides accurate planning and development information to the board for consideration. Amber has proven herself to be an asset to the department and the Board of County Commissioners.
We have been able to work with Amber on a number of different endeavors. And one of the greatest compliments that I can say is I've had a number of people in the community who have been able to use come to me and say that it's a pleasure to work with you. I appreciate the professionalism, your dedication to Jackson County, and to doing a good job. And for that, we certainly, the entire board is certainly very appreciative of that. Chair, entertain a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve Amber Barnes as the Employee of the Month for April 2024, and authorize a check in the amount of $200.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, and a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions?
I'd just like to say one thing. I've had the opportunity to work with Amber over the years, and I can truly say she is a very dedicated employee. And you can always call her, and she will get you the answer. Thank you, Amber.
Okay, with that being said, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving down to item, moving down to community development. We have nothing under public hearing, so moving down to community development. Item number one is board exception to the ship program maximum award amount. Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, so the board exception to the ship program rehabilitation assistance maximum award for special needs applicant on Section Avenue and Sneets. More work is required to bring them home to program standards than is achievable with the current $50,000 limit due to the cost of construction materials. An exception, not to exceed $14,999.99 is being requested to complete the items not covered in the current scope of work.
Okay, you heard the explanation. Kim, anything we need to, need to add to that?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add, this special needs applicant is, he's mentally and emotionally challenged. And so that's why we wanted to go ahead and get out in front of getting quotes for the additional work that needs to be done to go ahead and try to do that in as seamless a manner as possible.
And there is a possibility that once the bids come in, it may be less than this amount.
Oh, yes. We expect it to be less, but we want to request that.
This amount is sufficient, you think?
Yes.
Okay. I make the motion. We approve the question.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Swayze. Item number two is board approval of a temporary alcoholic beverage for Partners for Pets. Mr. Daniels?
Yes, sir. On March 25, 2024, a request for a temporary alcoholic beverage permit was submitted by Partners for Pets Incorporated, seeking approval to sell alcohol, beer only, at Halls of Palooza, event being held at Compass Lake in the Hill located at 645 Compass Lake Drive in unincorporated Jackson County. The event will be held from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on April 20, 2024. We do have members of Partners for Pets here. If you have any questions or they would like to speak.
You think we'd like to add to that? Okay, all right.
That's not a Sunday, is it?
No, it's not. It's a Saturday, isn't it?
Saturday. I make the motion. We approve the question.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck to Partners for Pets. I know it's a very worthwhile organization that does a lot to enhance the lives of the pets of Jackson County. So good luck with that. Absolutely. Item number three is board approval to set a public hearing for changes to Chapter 42. Mr. Daniels?
Yes, sir. So we actually need to make a slight change in this. We'd like to request to set a public hearing for 9:00 a.m. on May 14, 2024, to adopt changes to the Jackson County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42.
Is that our regularly scheduled meeting? I guess it is.
It is, yes. Just moving to the next.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments?
Are you going to provide us the changes so we can review it ahead of time? In plenty of time? Okay.
The question was from Commissioner Peacock whether we would be provided with the changes. The Miss Schlesinger indicated that in the affirmative, that would be the case. With that being said, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, moving down the agenda, is board discussion and direction on RV subdivisions. Mr. Daniels?
So the Community Development Planning Division Office has had several inquiries on RV subdivisions containing deeded lots. Since the county does not have an ordinance regulating RV subdivisions containing deeded lots, we're asking for board direction. So in your packet, you'll see a lot of background information. We've actually had an applicant come in and apply for this already. So this is something that we've seen in other areas, but just wanted to see what the board's thoughts were for Jackson County.
The, the, I mean, we allow persons to reside in RVs, but currently only on a temporary basis, not as permanent residents. So this would allow them to basically reside in an RV on a permanent basis.
Correct. Is this just for this area? Just for this location?
No, this is for, this is for the entire county.
That's right.
Well, this would.
I mean.
There, so.
Somebody wanted to put in a subdivision.
Right. A particular project has been proposed.
Or RV.
Yeah. But if we change what we have now, would it be for the county?
We would have to change the, I think we would have to change the ordinance. But my question is, how many of these are in the state of Florida? Do we know? Amber?
Amber. That's to the case.
So like Brett said, we have had several inquiries. We've had one individual that has been very persistent. Currently, we do allow RVs and RV parks. We do have those. We look at those as commercial development. But we do not have anything in our ordinances for RV subdivisions, for them to live there permanently. In your packet, there is a memo from Michelle, an email from her, stating that it would be good to get your opinion if this is something that you would even like to consider coming into Jackson County. We have reached out to several counties. And all of the counties that we've reached out to, they've had an overlay of their land development regulations. And that overlay would be a planned unit development, which would give a broad land use, such as, we can take Ag 2, which you can have one bolling per acre, and make it more dense. So these lots would be a lot smaller. But we're, we're asking, do you, one, would you like that in our community? And two, would you like it as a planned development, a planned unit development? If you do, we would have to put that into our comprehensive plan, and currently, we are updating that. So this is a perfect time to go about doing this.
The timing would be good. If, if there is an inclination from the board that they would like to see this type of development provided for, now would be a good time to do it.
Correct.
Commissioner Peacock?
So how large of a development is this guy proposing?
Um, currently, um, it's the Pinky Island Resort.
Altogether, it was seven.
It was 96 deeded lots. And you can put on there that you want the lots bigger for him to, I think most of these are self-contained, if I'm correct. He will have bathhouses. But in developments that come to Jackson County that wouldn't have self-contained units, I mean, the lots would have to be a little bit bigger to ensure that they have enough room for septic systems.
The, this particular project he's proposing, would he be hooking into a water and sewer?
No, sir. It would be a DEP.
Are these other counties, do they allow them to live in those RVs permanently? Or do they say, okay, you can stay?
For 180 days.
Six months.
Correct. And most of the lot.
Snowbirds.
Correct. And most of the lots, if you'll look, I do have some pictures in the back. They show that they do have like an accessory structure on the property, such as like a coach house or a carriage house. That's less than maybe 500 or 600 square feet. And then they would have a spot for their recreational vehicle.
There is a large section with the population that come out of Canada, and that's the one. Go south, and they have these spots. And every year, they go back to the same park, same spot. We have been getting them down in Panama City for years. Years ago, Panama City died at the memorial day. Now, it's booming, and it's because of the snowbirds. We might be able to capture some of those if we were inclined to approve these types of units.
Would we, would we be able to put the same time limitation on them, or?
You could.
So in other words, and I, I guess there's probably a pretty easy way of getting around that. I mean, they could stay for 180 days and leave, and then come back and rent it again. So I don't know how effective that would be.
What, are they, is he going to have his own septic and sewer and water there for each one, like they do in a campground?
Um, well, I'm not sure about the septic. I know he did talk about putting some septic tanks down. And that wouldn't come through our office. It would come through environmental health. But, I mean, he could change this around a little bit to accommodate for septic systems if he had to put those in. If they weren't self-contained.
Mr. Chairman?
They could also put their own system in.
Yeah.
Correct.
If I, if I wanted to.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Will Anne's on the line.
Oh, go ahead, Will Anne. Good morning.
I was just going to add, can y'all hear me okay?
Barely.
Barely.
Speak louder.
Something else. Hold on. Is that better?
Little bit. Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to add that I think really what we need to know, the board, is just if, in general, this is something you all are interested in. And if it is, and staff can work to bring some language back, and we can work out all of those details.
As Will Anne just said, I think the, the direction that they need is, do we want to move forward with asking staff to, to come up with some provision of language to allow this? And I, I think it's something that we need to look at. Commissioner McKinney had a question. Yeah, Commissioner.
Oh, is that going to be, they own their own lot?
They would own their own lot, just like a regular subdivision.
Maintain their own lot? If it, they had to put in a septic tank and their own water, it probably maybe, they may have a water system. I don't know, but they might not have sewer. It's a certain size lot they gotta have, and put in a septic tank.
Correct. I mean, they, according to environmental health, they would have to, if they were going to put in a septic tank, they would have to have at least a half an acre.
If they were put in a well, then there's separation requirements, right? In a well and a septic tank, so that would. Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, for the legal. Ms. Michelle, as far as your research, have you seen anything, any cons for us, you know, against, for us, you know, any kind of problems, liability issues, we really facing opening up to this?
So I couldn't really find much helpful information on how communities that have these type of subdivisions actually regulate these. And I'm really struggling conceptually with differentiating this type of development versus just a regular manufactured mobile home park. I mean, I understand that the size of the lot may, may be a little bit larger than you might find in a manufactured mobile home lot. But I think this is going to open the door to some additional issues that the county hasn't dealt with, specifically when it comes to short-term rentals. And making sure that, because I can tell you from my own observation in Gulf County, where I have an RV lot, they're, they are allowing these RV subdivisions to pop up. And that's really where I went first for, you know, to identify some kind of helpful regulation. But I think what you're going to end up seeing is that these are going to turn into short-term rental areas that you would find in a regular campground, or I guess at a mobile home park. But you're not going to have the infrastructure that you would normally have in in the campground or the, the mobile home park. So I also think it's going to open the door for later on, you know, an additional push in the community for people that don't want to create an RV subdivision to be allowed to stay in their RV permanently. That's an issue that we've dealt with, you know, for years and.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That would be my issue for us, you know, we want to, you know, to limit it and have some kind of control of, control over it. We want to be thinking about the apparatus of time limit for us, you know, like you said, team, I mean, all, you know, happy year, happy native day, whatever.
Well. Commissioner Peacock?
I'm inclined to say, let's explore it further, because I see the potential of drawing people into the county. That, the snowbirds especially, because that's basically what they want. You know, they want to come in and spend six months, and they're back to Canada and go up north. So I think it could be an asset to the county to have something like this. And we may want to get into, you know, the maintenance of the park, the way it's designed, make sure they, they're building a high-end park, not a, a dump.
I'm inclined to kind of agree with that, to expand on that a little bit further. I, I think as long as we could put enough provisions in there that we're getting the type of development that we're hoping for, and we're not, you know, opening up a can of worms to, to allow all different types of people, all different types of RVs to be used, but something like this.
The ones they're showing, yes. The ones they're showing, yes.
Something like this I would be in favor of. Well, is, is there a way of writing that ordinance and the, writing the ordinance and describing the, the PUD? So that we get something like this and.
We could.
Yeah. So I mean, as long as it was restrictive, then I would.
RVs, you know, you can spend two and three hundred thousand dollars on one in a heartbeat.
Some.
Oh, yeah.
It may be, it may be that if you talking about people coming down, staying like six months, there may be somebody staying there all the time. But if they maintain their own lot, then they'd be something worked out. If somebody is going to maintain that whole park.
That, that's.
You know, and control it, kind of like they were renting lots, you know, but they own their own lot. If they go on six months, that, that lot's gonna be, gonna get kind of wrecked a little bit, you know?
Well, you could require like a homeowners association.
Very, yeah.
And most of these do have HOAs.
I like.
So, but, okay, go through.
I'm sorry.
I'd just like to get a better understanding of, of the utility aspect to that thing. How their sewer is going to work, kind of water supply is going to work. I mean, I can't see ninety-six lots having ninety-six septic tanks. Doesn't, I don't think that's gonna happen, especially you can't with these small. Uh, I'd like to see how he's, how they're gonna work that.
I make a motion, we let the planning department work on this, maybe come up with some guidelines and. Bring it back to us, uh, explore it a little further.
Is that in form of the motion?
Yeah, it is a motion. I want Miss Amber to work for the.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments or concerns? Amber, is that enough direction?
If you've got more questions, reach out to us.
Yeah.
Oh, I will.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Amber. Okay, moving down, uh, the agenda into section five, which is, uh, reports and requests. We've got the consent agenda. I guess everyone has had, I trust everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda items. In case, got a motion from Commissioner McKinney to approve, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments concerning, uh, consent agenda hearing. None of those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number two is a legislative session update. I thought I saw Mr. Susky come in. Um. Alan, if you want to. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Morning, morning Commissioners. Always a great day to get out of Tallahassee and get over to Jackson County. So I appreciate the invite. Um, just a quick update on session. Uh, I think you all know the governor, uh, the leg- the legislation is, uh, legislature's finished, uh, they signed it on time. Uh, last year's budget was about a hundred and nineteen billion dollars. This year they cut that slightly. A lot of the federal funds we saw during COVID. Uh, went away, those one-time funds, uh, so it was about a hundred and seventeen billion dollars, uh, this year. Um, still significantly higher than we saw four or five years ago. Um, but can the governor and the legislature continue to invest in infrastructure? Uh, as a, as a huge piece of the budget. That's really where we focus most of our work, uh, in Tallahassee for you all. Uh, the governor has not signed the budget yet, so we still have to go through the veto process. Uh, we have met with his senior staff. Uh, his policy and budget director and talked through the projects that I'm going to mention here in a second that we were able to get. Uh, in the budget, working with, with Rhett, Will Anne and the rest of your staff who always, you know, are extremely helpful and making sure that we have all the. The, the help that we need, uh, with the materials and the backup to kind of show. Uh, our legislative delegation, why these things are so important. So with that, uh, but one, the, the one thing this year that we were, uh, really excited about. Um, the number's not huge, but I think it's, it's a victory. Uh, nonetheless, we've been working for a few years on the corrections officer raises. I think you all are very familiar, uh, with that. About three years ago, the legislature and the governor decided to give raises. Uh, in recurring funding to corrections officers, uh, across the state. Uh, what they didn't know at the time was that Jackson County, and I believe it's Gulf County, is the other, uh, maybe it's Franklin, but any one of the coastal counties. Are the two counties that actually have employees, as, as you all recognized here today. Uh, that, that you all run the jails and every other, uh, county and to include some here, obviously. Uh, the sheriffs do that. So they put all that money in for the sheriffs and did not include those two counties. So the second year we went back and said, hey, this was, this was obviously overlooked. We need to include money now. Uh, for, well, we said Jackson County, they, they included both, but we only really cared what, what you all got. Uh, and included that in. Now, what we didn't know is that they were also giving additional money in year two for those raises to those sheriff's offices. And so, so we were, we, we got money, but we were still behind. So we went in this year, uh, there was no planned raises, uh, for the rest of the corrections officers this year. But what the legislature did was they went back and fixed it. So they added in money this year to basically percentage-wise catch you all up. With the rest of the corrections officers in the state so that the county, because you all, I believe, were, were paying that out of, you were still covering those costs. Uh, out of, out of your, out of your revenue. Uh, so the state is now going to cover that going forward. That's recurring funding. Uh, so as long as nothing changes, uh, you know, we shouldn't be, we don't, we won't have to go back and fight for that every year. That will happen. And then any additional raise in any future year, now that we're all level set. When they give everybody a raise, uh, again, if they do that, uh, then you all will be, uh, you know, uh, included in that. So we shouldn't have to have that fight anymore. That should be off our plate. Uh, so we were able to get done that this year, this year, uh, and, and it was, uh, it was a great, a great job to, to Will Anne and the rest of the team for making sure that. Uh, my math was right and that the legislature's math was right and that we weren't going to try to have to fight this again next year. Uh, so in addition to that, we had two legislative projects that were funded. Uh, Boozer Road, yeah, I got a half a million dollars in the budget. That is obviously only for one, one piece of it. Uh, there is a job growth grant, uh, in, in at the Department of Commerce to try to cover, uh, most. I, I don't think it's all of it, but I believe it's most of the remainder of that road for, for a certain project. Uh, so that five hundred thousand dollars is in the budget is hopefully going to be paired with money from the Department of Commerce, uh, to make that a much larger, uh, project. And then an additional five hundred thousand, you remember last year we got a million dollars for the conference center out at Endeavor for those, for that construction cost. Uh, obviously the costs were higher than what we anticipated them being. Uh, all construction costs have gone up. Uh, so the legislature saw fit to give an additional five hundred thousand dollars to the county, uh, to work on that project. And so the, the last thing we did this year, obviously the, the tornado that came through, uh, the beginning of session, uh, the debris cleanup. Land staff reached out and talked about, uh, that debris cleanup cost. We worked with the legislature, specifically Chair Trumble. Uh, because of the damage to both Bay County and Jackson County, uh, was, uh, was instrumental and, and was really a leader on getting some funding. Uh, in the legisla- in, in the budget to help, uh, uh, repay essentially that cleanup cost. And so we're still working through the details of that, but essentially what they did was they took some old money from last year. Uh, I believe the Water Management District and repurposed that money to allow that tornado activity debris, uh, to be cleaned up, which is. Uh, number one, it's, it's good because they're, you know, the reason, reason money that, uh, otherwise would have, would have gone back to the state general revenue coffers. However, also because it's in what we call the back of the bill. Uh, if the, once the governor, governor signs the budget, if he does not veto that certain provision, which I don't think he will. Uh, then that money is available immediately. We don't have to wait till the July one fiscal year. Uh, because the money's already authorized in a previous budget. So it, it, you know, if the governor signs the budget in the next two weeks, then we can start working with the Water Management District to try to get that reimbursed. Uh, much quicker and not have to wait on contracting, starting, uh, in the new state fiscal year. So, uh, those were the four issues that, that we really, uh, worked on this year. And, um. Again, I'll, we'll keep you all up to date on both the job growth grant and, uh, the governor's veto list, but we've had really great conversations with them. The governor's been really great to Jackson County. I think he and his staff will continue to be, uh, they didn't really seem to have any issues with any of the projects we had included. So I don't, I don't anticipate, uh, any problems. In the next two or three weeks as he rolls, uh, his budget out. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, and, uh, before, before Mr. Peacock, uh, one other issue that we're going to need some, uh, assistance with moving forward. A little later on in the agenda, we're approving, uh, a letter to, uh, uh, for, uh, showing our support. Uh, for a new two hundred beds, uh, forensic facility to be constructed at Sunland.
Okay.
And I know there's some seed money, uh, the planning is moving forward and we just want our legislative delegation, and I've met with Shane Abbott. Uh, to know that, uh, Jackson County and the city of Marianna are very supportive of, uh, having that facility constructed here. Just want to kind of put that on your radar to make sure that, uh, uh, Jay is also aware of it and, and anything that we can do to. To push that forward, push the funding forward for the construction of that, that'd be very beneficial.
Right. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make sure that we get a copy of that letter from Will Anne and Rhett and, uh, we can talk with. I, I would imagine that's probably going through DCF. Um, uh, we could talk with the DCF secretary.
Yeah.
And make sure that they also understand, we can, you know, help the delegation get, get their, their comments kind of routed in the, in the correct way. So we'll, we'll take that as a, as a to-do, uh, from this meeting as well.
Very good. Okay.
Did we have a request in for, uh, the autism center?
Uh, that was handled by Marty Coley. That, and that did get funded at, at the very end. So it was in the budget. Uh, Will Anne asked me to keep track of it, but I don't want to, I, I, I don't know if Marty's here, but, um, certainly she could talk more about it, but, uh, that was put in. It was taken out of the budget during conference. But then it was put back in at the very last minute. So I believe that was fully funded, uh, this year at, at the end of the budget.
I didn't, what was your question?
The autism center. I, I thought they had a request in and he didn't, I didn't realize Marty.
Yeah, she handles that one specifically for the, for that entity.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Go get some more money.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman.
We, we appreciate, appreciate all your work. Will Anne?
Yes, um, I always like to make my annual plug for Alan Suski being so helpful to Jackson County. Um, everything he just listed today would not have happened without a lobbyist. I am not a lobbyist. I don't want to be. Um, and so just really appreciate his efforts and they really do pay off, uh, not just for legislative appropriations. That's, um, awesome. And we really appreciate the governor and Senator Trumble and Representative Abbott for all of their support. But it's really more of the daily, uh, work that Alan does with connecting us to people, making phone calls. Getting us meetings with the right people about different topics that y'all don't necessarily see, but I talk to him probably more than he wishes I would. Um, so just wanted to say thank you to Alan for all of his hard work.
Thank you, Will Anne. And again, I repeat what she said. She said it very eloquently, but I think all of the, the commissioners, uh, will express the same, uh. Level of appreciation for the work that she did for Jackson County.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you. It's, it's an honor to do it. I appreciate y'all letting me do it.
No, thank you. Okay. Moving down the agenda, item number three, under reports and requests is board approval of a memorandum of understanding for Project Bristol. Mr. Baker. Good morning.
Good morning. Baker from Opportunity, Florida. Thank you for letting me appear before you. I'm here on behalf of the Jackson County Economic Development Committee. We have a project, uh, that I'm working for them and it's a confidential project for manufacturing and distributing called Bristol. Um, they wish to, uh, obtain some land free from the county at Endeavor Manufacturing Park. Uh, up to thirty acres, they'd like to build a seventy-five thousand square foot facility to begin with. Possibly expand it to three hundred thousand square feet. They, business plans call to employ, uh, seventy-five to a hundred people, twenty-five dollars an hour plus benefits. Um. According to the MOU that we've drawn up and we had vetted by the county attorney, Michelle. Um, they will submit a site plan and that will determine how much land they actually will initially get. From, that you guys may let them have and, uh, and then reserve some, uh, land around it for future use if possible. Uh, gentlemen or staff, do you have any questions about this project?
Uh, I, I do not. Commissioner Peacock?
Do we know which engineering firm is going to review the site plan?
We, we did not determine that, uh, you know, the county could have their attorney do it. Uh, we, we stated engineer in there. County planning could look at it. Um, somebody you wanted to designate to look at and say, yes. This size building, if they're going to expand and look at how they wish to expand. And, and things of that nature.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we approve this request.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Before we vote on that, I will say that, uh, uh, in an effort to keep the board apprised, uh, Mr. Baker met with, I think, all of the, uh, board members individually to give us a few more details. So that we had a, a better understanding of the, uh, the breadth of this project and we appreciate that. With that being said, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Roy, thank you.
Sir, thanks, sir.
Okay, item number four, board approval of a professional consulting services contract amendment. Mr. Daniels.
Yes, sir. So effective April first, twenty twenty-four, the Marianna HMB employees are now part of DRMP. We have Jason Crenshaw and Donald Stanley here to explain kind of what's going on.
Jason.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. Uh, so basically HMB professional engineers and DRMP are owned by the same parent company by the name of Trilling Group. Uh, basically we provide some of the same services in the Panhandle and kind of overlapping. And HMB really hasn't had the opportunity to grow into other communities because DRMP is already there. Uh, so basically what Trilling Group has decided is to merge our office with the RMP. Uh, that gives us the ability to provide you guys additional services that we weren't able to provide as DRMP. Uh, we have, uh, surveying and mapping. We have a chipley office out of, that handles that. We can do alternative delivery. GIS, structural engineering and some additional water resources and stormwater and traffic engineering as well. So. Really just an opportunity for growth for HMB to, uh, provide you guys some additional services.
You'll still be maintaining an office here at your present location?
Absolutely. We'll still have our ma- office right there behind the Dixie.
So as far as, uh, existing personnel and existing offices, probably no changes that.
No changes to our personnel. Everybody's coming on board with the RMP.
So we'll still be seeing you and Donald pretty.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We're not going anywhere.
DRMP is a, a company that's been around for a long.
Yes, sir. They've been in, in the Florida Panhandle for the past twenty years and in, in Florida since the early sixties. Uh, we've got offices from Pensacola in the Panhandle from Pensacola to Tallahassee. So we get a lot more additional resources and manpower and capabilities as well. So.
Uh, DRMP, again, the shows goes on, they've been, it stands for Dire, Little Mills and Precour.
Yes, sir.
So it's a.
They, those old, those guys are, are long gone. So it's just now just straight the RMP acronym. So.
Okay, okay. Chair Lunt, time to motion.
Some more, Chairman.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney. Second from Commissioner Branch. Question from Commissioner Peacock?
None unrelated with.
Go ahead.
Do you guys have the ability to map roads? Go out and do survey of roads prior to a storm? You know, we got into that with FEMA.
Yes, sir. I, I believe this is a capability that we can provide. We have, um, our surveying crews have a, a mobile IDR setup. It's on a vehicle. Uh, they can basically drive a road and, and survey it as we're going with mobile IDR.
Can you get up with me later on? Let's talk about that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Moving down the agenda, item number five, this is board approval to apply for, uh, library to be a passport application facility. See Ms. Hines coming to the podium?
Yes, um, I don't mean to step on anybody's toes. Uh, I don't know how many passport applications y'all take in a month, but. One of the places in Jackson County that does it is of course the courthouse. Uh, at any rate, um, this is an opportunity for, um. Uh, civic, uh, organization sponsored by government to, um, allow people to come in and accept their applications for the passport. The reason I want to do it is because, uh, each person, each application that is accepted. And, and we don't approve it. We just accept it, okay? But you get thirty-five dollars for every one and I just thought that it was an opportunity to get a little bit of money and. I don't expect us to do as well as Dothan, but I have a friend who works for the Dothan Library and they made a hundred thousand dollars last year. So, um, so I'm just asking, it, there's no guarantee if I apply for it, there's no guarantee that will be approved. Because they're going to look at the agencies, the number of places, you know, in this area. And we have, um, Jackson County courthouse and I think the Washington County courthouse. And of course the post offices will also accept applications. But, um, I just thought that since libraries might, you know. What now?
Local post office.
They don't. Uh, they're listed on the list. Now that's one more for us.
Clyde, is there any reason not to move forward with this?
You know, we, we get them, uh, we do them there at the corpse office. Uh, there is a little bit more to it than just accepting them.
Right.
They come and do an audit every year, but. Uh, and then out of your thirty-five dollars, you also have to pay for the postage.
I do. Okay, see that, that wasn't brought out in the.
Yeah, there's.
Well, I had talked to Will Anne about it and she had said, good, you know, she said, I don't see any reason not to, but she did say come before the board. So. You know, I, I haven't put in an application yet. I'm just looking at it to see if it's, you know, feasible.
How much do you do every year? Any idea?
We, we, the last couple of years have been a little higher. Um, I'd say between sixteen and twenty thousand dollars gross. Now, that's not a net because you get, you spend for every application received, you have to send it off. Registered mail, it's nine dollars and eighty-five cents. So your thirty-five dollars goes to twenty-five.
Right.
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Are you going to do the pitchers?
Well, you can. I haven't investigated that. Okay, but yeah, that's, uh, I think. Well, you can. I haven't investigated that, okay, but yeah, that's I think one way to.
Yeah, it is.
To, you know, make up some of that revenue.
The information you gave us in one place, it says acceptance facilities verify the information of applicants. They got a form, D S eleven. Y'all verify that information.
There is, there's a whole list of things you have to renew every year. It's qualifications. You have to review these application. In some instances, if they don't have their birth certificate, there's certain things you have to do. There's a little more to it than just taking the application and take it to the postal office, but I mean, I don't see any reason why. We have people, because they set up appointments in Dothan too. And we're just walking. We have people come to Dothan all the time.
Yeah, and that's what they 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 used to just do walk-ins and it was overwhelming for the library, so.
I didn't want us to get into something where it looks great and then suddenly you're spending a lot of time and effort verifying information.
Nothing's ever easy, you know, nothing's ever as easy as it appears. Yeah, yeah, but like I said, I just thought it might be an opportunity for us to generate a little bit of revenue.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock? We have a second. Second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? I guess my only question would be by by having a alternative place to have these applications taken. You know, maybe it will will not just be a case of taking business from the clerk's office and transferring it to the library. Hopefully, it will actually allow us to process more applications in Jackson County as a whole. I guess would be the the idea.
Well, the library's open on the weekends.
Right.
Well, we're, yeah, ten to two on Saturdays.
Yeah, and you won't require any additional staff.
So it's going to be my project.
Okay, with that being said, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Hines? Number six, moving down the agenda is board approval for a grant reimbursement to Tripp Smith for Rock-a-Dock.
So in February, the T D C and the B O C C approved a grant reimbursement of two thousand six hundred fifty dollars and seventy-three cents to Rock-a-Dock. Upon receiving the reimbursement check, the event organizer notified T D C staff that the check needs to be made out directly to the event organizer, Tripp Smith. Staff are seeking approval from the B O C C to make this change for the grant reimbursement.
We see any issues with that from a legal standpoint? Michelle? You heard the explanation in the request. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock? Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, moving down the agenda, board selection of a ranking committee for architectural and design for our architectural and design continuing service contract.
No, it's not the contract. We're to the ranking committee.
This is this is to select an architectural firm.
Well, we request that the board select a ranking committee. Meaning us.
It could, it can be us.
I make a motion, the commissioners do it.
Well, let me, and I just something just dawned on me. This is one of the three firms, correct me if I'm wrong, is Dag Architects?
Yes.
That has has put in a applicant, a package. I've got a relationship with Dag Architects, so I need to ask Will Ann if she'll sit in for me. It would be a conflict of interest.
Yes.
So your motion, the four commissioners with Will Ann.
Right, would you abstaining and let Will Ann take your place? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't we have somebody on there that deals with this every day?
Do what?
Why wouldn't we have somebody on the ranking committee that deals with architecture?
In other words, in one of the staff persons, is what you're asking. Well, with with Will Ann being on there, that kind of would, but certainly the we could ask, you know, Rhett or anyone else on staff that wanted to.
I I'm not, I'm not really saying that it has to be staff, just someone that that knows about that.
Well, that would be me, but I mean, I know I know all of these firms. I've definitely seen all the way and.
I'm talking about anybody that is familiar with that situation. We can, can we ask people to be on?
Well, you know, Rhett's the one that would, I mean, again, talking about staff that would be on there, Rhett deals, dealt with DAGs, dealt with C R A. Rhett would be that person from staff and and if Rhett would be more appropriate to serve in my place, I'm comfortable with that.
Will Will Ann and I, either one, when we deal with them frequently, I mean, C R A is our current contractor. We've had on retainer, I guess you could say. We just signed a contract with DAG for a grant project, so I mean, we do deal with them often. I think either one would, you know, satisfy.
Why can't both of them?
They can.
You can have as many as you want.
I mean, I know they know.
I just, I want the commissioners to be on it because we need to know who we're dealing with and who.
But we don't.
We will.
We didn't deal with them every day.
No, but if you review this information that you are being presented, you will have an idea when something comes up, who you're dealing with. That's my only, from my perspective, I want to know who the county is dealing with on these contracts.
Yeah, it's kind of a, you know, two different approaches. One approach, Commissioner Peacock is saying, is let all of the commissioners always serve on these selection committees because we're the ones that buck stops here, so to speak.
You got it.
Commissioner Branch is saying, and I I've seen this approach as well, is let staff serve as the primary selection committee and let one of the commissioners serve as the the earpiece of the voice. So I mean, I've seen it done both ways.
I just think there's sometimes, there's good things that happen that we never know about. Sometimes there's bad things happening we never know. That familiar weather every day makes a lot of difference. It's kind of reading a book, you know, how I interpret it may be different from me.
Well, in this particular case, and I think your motion is that to let four commissioners minus me since.
Minus you with either Rhett or Will Ann or Rhett and Will Ann, I don't care.
Rhett and Will Ann, sort of, which would be kind of be a compromise.
I want to know what's going on.
Okay, that's a motion. That's your motion. So we got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. We have a second.
What is the motion?
The motion is for the four commissioners, Commissioner Peacock, Mr. Branch, Commissioner Crutchfield, Commissioner McKinney, along with Will Ann Daniels and Rhett Daniels to serve as the selection, the ranking committee to review these three proposals and rank them, grade them, and select the most qualified firm for the job. Got a second?
My second.
A motion from Commissioner, uh, second from Commissioner, motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We've got about two minutes. So if it's okay with the board, let's see, we're in between item seven and eight. Why don't we take a two-minute break and then we'll.
I'm sorry to interject. I invited Taylor Elliott. He's the concessionaire at Blue Springs. He has another meeting. We were hoping to get to item fourteen, which is addressing the upcoming season's concession and entry fees. You know, obviously, he's had it for a year going into the second year to know if the board wanted to have any type of questions, conversation, meeting, or anything like that, but he is here in the crowd if we could.
Let's go, let's go ahead and if that's okay with the board, we'll take this last item. Then we'll adjourn for a five-minute break and then we'll come back and open up our our special meeting at ten o'clock. So yes, sir, if you don't mind, hobble forward and start you nine for the record, please, sir.
So the the request is to, as part of the concessionary contract, we required that the concessionaires submit in writing and request to increase pricing year to year. So one of the requests is to just update concession items, which is going to be, you know, hot dogs, drinks, all that sort of stuff, just given the market. And then additionally, the request is to, this is on page four ninety-seven in the pack, I'm sorry.
Four ninety-seven.
He's also requesting to increase the admission fee on weekends, being Saturday and Sunday, to five dollars per person. And then to increase the season pass from thirty dollars to forty-five due to extending the season. So he's been opened up on weekends for about a month now.
Yeah, so this year we'll be open one hundred and forty-four days, where in the past they were only open eighty-two days. So we'll be open seventy-six percent longer, so that's why I wanted to increase the price of the season pass. When, and as far as weekends, the price going up, we plan on opening till ten o'clock each night. So that's why I wanted to increase the price in the weekends as well.
Open it up until ten o'clock at night, so you'd have swimming after.
Well, I have a landscape blighter coming in tomorrow, so we'll put up lighting on some trees hopefully. And then we got a bunch of plans for the weekends. Like movie nights, concerts, stuff like that, bonfires, luos, tiki's, stuff like that.
Concerts aren't going to irritate your neighbors, are they?
Oh, I mean, I don't have too many neighbors over there.
Oh, you do, right across the way and down the park.
Oh, I mean, of course, I I need to get approved on if if we do concerts or not, but those are the plans. Even if we don't stay open till ten, I do plan on staying open at least till till sunset, so it'll increase hours by at least a couple of hours every day.
So the the increase in admission is just during the weekend and it's being increased to five dollars from.
Four dollars.
Four dollars or a dollar. I mean.
I think when we did this contract, we said he could go up to five dollars.
Yeah, there's a max of five dollars. Yes, sir.
And and as a concessionaire, he's the one that's either going to benefit or, you know, lose businesses as a result of this. So I I think it fits as coming as a recommendation and it's in, it's in compliance with our contract up.
And all that too, since we've started this, Taylor's been great to work with. And so he's he's added me to their daily counts and last year's attendance, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but it was way higher than anything we've ever had since the counter.
We almost doubled from the year before.
Right. How's it working now that you started opening early during the year, the weekends?
Uh, I mean, I think every year is going to get busier and busier as more people find out that we're opening earlier in the season. It's not as busy as I like, but I mean, last week we did, yeah, I mean, we did a hundred and seventy people each day last week.
Wow.
Not not too bad.
Well, I think I think, you know, with the increased number of amenities that you're providing to the park attendees, I think that that'll, you know, again, do nothing but help it grow as far as the attendance. I know later on in the agenda, we've got something where we're improving some additional workup at Sang La, which I think will add to, you know, opportunities for visitors to the park, so. Yeah, I'm in agreement with it.
I've been getting a lot of good compliments from Alabama's side for residents up there coming down to the Springs and also just continue to do the good work you're doing out there.
Thank you.
To me, when you look at Blue Springs, the way it was when I used to go out there as a kid and you look at it, the facility as it exists now, I mean, it's it's a totally different facility. So much, so much, so much better of a facility from the from the aesthetic standpoint and from a functional standpoint.
Well, I can't take credit for that. Y'all did that.
I'm just saying the the work that we've done, that Rhett's put in and Chuck Hatchell before. Rhett has really improved that facility and it's really a gem. You know, as a natural resource, it was already a gem, but with the improvements that have been made and now with the concessionaire coming on and adding some additional amenities, it really is something we should be proud of.
Have y'all been successful in getting rid of that grass?
I have actually, I have stone from Stone Aquatics coming out tomorrow to see about removing it completely, if that's an option. But I'm getting a quote from him tomorrow.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield to go along with the authorizing the increases in prices. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much and continue to do good work out there. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back for our ten o'clock special meeting.
That way we can be able to make sure there's a healthy amount of questions and dialogue in case any of y'all have questions or if they have questions for the presenters as well.
Okay, but before we turn it over to the presenters, we've got three that are going to be presenting today. Do we know who the, do we know who they are?
Um, I know uh Jack Work Marketing Group is one of them and then there are two others um that I don't recall the uh the names on.
Any of them here? Or? So we do have one here and then we've got two other that are going to join us uh digitally, electronically, virtually.
I saw Jack's uh information online, yes, it looks like he's on there as well. Um, and then I'm not a hundred percent certain on the third entity, that may be Mr. Anderson or Mr. Shelton that's on there.
And then at the end of the presentations, uh the ranking committee, which is five commissioners along with uh you and who else?
Carrie.
Uh Carrie is is also one of the selection committees. When do these need to be turned in? Are you hoping to have these turned in uh today?
So Lindsay, our procurement officer, is going to be sending out the ranking sheet and then she should have some instructions for everyone on the timelines for those as well. Um, hopefully by the last April meeting, we will have those ranking sheets back and we can be able to look at making decisions at that point.
Okay, regarding the presentations today, is there a time limit? Did we give them a certain amount of time for the presentations?
Fifteen or twenty minutes for presentation.
Okay, and yeah, or do you want to take them in alphabetical order or? Any any particular way that you want to take them?
I think alphabetical.
Okay, so from an alphabetical standpoint, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but I I do need to make sure this is clear on the record. We have more than one TDC board member here.
Okay.
Was this advertised as a meeting of the TDC board?
I don't believe so, but the TDC itself isn't voting on it, only the commissioners are voting on the strategic.
So so the TDC is as a board is not taking any action?
And they're not making any recommendations?
Only the chairman who is sitting on the ranking committee.
Okay.
Yeah, you uncomfortable with that?
Well, I I just, it it's fine for them to be here, the issue would be if they engage in discussion. Like if if they, any of the members come up and comment to the board um a- about the various proposals. Um, if the TDC board is going to review those proposals and make any kind of recommendations and that might get kind of gray from a sunshine standpoint.
So we need to clarify that the uh who's here from the TDC besides Obar and Carrie? Just. Two? So uh uh please, Obar, don't don't participate in any of the comments or discussions with any of the board members uh after you, just keep keep all of your comments.
Would Carrie the same as well, would it be acceptable for her to be?
If there's just one speaking, that that's fine, um you only have a sunshine issue when there's two.
Now, Commissioner Donifro does serve on the TDC board.
Are you an ex officio or are you a a member, member?
Member.
As the board's representative.
Okay, I think I think you're okay, um.
I'll be voting as a commissioner, not as a TDC member.
Yeah, that that I that's kind of where my concern is coming in, um. That's true, I just I just don't want anybody to get in any.
The problem is, are we having, are they having a meeting that is unauthorized? It's TDC, that's sunshine law.
Ranking things in the back of the. And on the, hey, right here, it said we turn them by Friday, four twelve twenty-four.
Page one nineteen.
One nineteen. These are three groups. In that order, what you're saying.
Yeah, I can look on the, the D N A. There it says.
Okay, so, okay, very good. So there's some directions relative to the the ranking process as far as the timing goes. Okay, well, let's um move forward then, Michelle, I mean, are we good to go?
I would just recommend that that either of you actually participate in discussion today, just to cover your own bases.
Okay, so we're good.
Can she feed her questions to me?
I I I guess I'm not quite following. We're all going to be participating in the presentations, hearing the presentations, able to ask questions.
Yes.
Because this is an advertised meeting.
Um, the board and commissioners, my concern is for the TDC board members. And I say this because I've I've been watching some other uh communities that have had some issues. They had their planning members, their their planning members attended a city council meeting uh and participated in discussion and they were criminally charged, Valerie Bassford, for sunshine violations. So this is, I'm not, I'm not picking on anybody, this is my my concern that I don't, I don't want anybody to get into a gray area.
So you're saying that Carrie and Obar can both sit and listen?
They absolutely are, are, this is a public meeting, they're absolutely welcome to attend, there's no issues with their attendance. The issue would be them participating in discussion. Um, if the TDC board is going to make a recommendation about the proposals, that would be my concern.
Is the TDC going to make a recommendation? I mean, I don't think that they will.
Only as a a ranking mem- uh.
Yeah, as one one member of the ranking committee. So Carrie, as part of the selection committee, will have a participation in the selection, but only just one vote, there's nothing. Well, that is, that is voting, that that is, yeah.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, definitely don't want to be a criminal person, I mean. But I also don't want to participate and be involved in the ranking if I can't legitimately ask questions. That might be a concern to go into with who I would choose and how I would rank it. I, I mean, anybody knows who knows I have questions. So I want to be, you know, if it's a conflict and I need to be removed from the whole thing, as I wouldn't be able to properly rank without being able to ask questions that I have.
Okay, well, then let's go that route then, let's just say that uh we'll exclude Carrie from the ranking. I mean, you can sit in as a public member and listen to the, listen to the presentations just like anybody else, but then we'll exclude her from the ranking committee. So it'll be just the five commissioners, which is pretty much, I mustn't be doing anyway. Are we good with that?
Yes, sir, and that was my apologies, I made the assumption that since we, TDC board wouldn't be voting on this, that we would be in the clear, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so right now, uh on the ranking sheet, we've got Work Marketing Group LLC. We've got Oak Road Government and we've got Symbiosis Planning Consulting LLC and Kimley Horn, I guess is a consultant. Who who are you with?
The Symbiosis Planning Consulting where Kimley Horn has got some.
Okay, why don't, since we've got them present, why don't we let them go first? Is that okay? Is that okay with everybody? Okay, go ahead then, if you don't mind, come to the podium and. And we'll give you, expect your name for the record, please, sir.
Uh, Jarris Barbie, uh, I'm the principal planner and owner of Symbiosis Planning Consulting. Uh, one zero one one seven Kingsbridge Avenue, Tampa, Florida.
Okay.
And Hadley?
Hadley Peterson, I would Kimley Horn, one one two zero Richardson Road, Tallahassee, Florida.
Welcome.
Well, we we really do appreciate this opportunity and we look forward. Yes, we'll we'll just tell him to go to the next slide when we're ready. Um, so just to to start off, we were only told that there would be seven minutes to present. So we want to just reflect that we've pre- prepared a succinct presentation. And if you do have any direct questions that are more in depth, if we could pull up our uh RFQ submittal, if you have any direct references, then we'd be more than happy to answer them there. Um, so just to to start off and give a little background about me myself. Um, I grew up in Jackson County, Florida, lived here my whole entire life up until college. And I went off to college and um got educated as as a planner and uh have spent my professional career um in land planting and entitlement work. But I'm looking forward now to this opportunity to give back to my home community. It means an immense amount to me, so I'm extremely happy and proud to be able to stand here uh and and offer up here and and I brought Hadley here, which is um, she's a also a professional planner and she has experience um in community engagements and has worked across the country in community engagement and planning activities such as tourism strategic plans. So Hadley and I went to school together, so I brought Hadley with me for us to try to tackle this for you guys and and bring a competent team.
And like Jarris mentioned, my name is Hadley Peterson. I am a planner, but really focused on economic development and how to leverage historic and recreational assets for communities' growth, um investment and development. So I've worked on several strategic tourism plans across the country for various sized communities as well as um in the city of Vancouver, Canada, doing a strategic tourism plan for their uh parks and open space system. So I have about ten years' experience in kind of this strategic planning with a specific focus on leveraging communities' existing assets for visitors and overall community quality of life. And so we're just going to go through our approach.
Next slide, please.
And so it just as a background to Kimley Horn, um since we are here with symbiosis, we obviously have a strong infrastructure arm, which a lot of you are probably a little more familiar with. But just wanted to quickly talk about the work that we do in strategic envisioning, planning across the state of Florida. You go to the next slide. Uh, so we have worked all over the state of Florida for various parks and community development planning, everything from comprehensive planning and zoning to more of this strategic planning and visioning. And we're really excited about the opportunity to work a little bit closer to home.
Yeah, I'm very excited for the opportunity to work closer to home. I've been stuck down in Tampa now uh for for several years uh with with my fiance. So I love this opportunity, I can't can't wait if chosen. Um, next slide, please. So we, what we lined out in our RFQ was this this approach to this strategic plan. We we laid out how we would kick off the project with some various meetings. Um, and then that would go into our community engagement section. And what we really plan on doing is highlighting what we take in from from you all as representatives of the board and the TDC as well as from the community and taking that and facilitating that through our our community overview and tourism outlook, leading to form our mission, vision and priorities of this plan that that drafts this strategic plan and lays out how we would go go about helping you um spend spend this TDC money over the next five years strategically to line up and support your strategic plan that has already um been adopted by you all recently. Next slide, please. So, oh, Hadley.
Okay, uh, so as Jarris mentioned, our approach is really to work with the community to build a roadmap that's built on community priorities as well as coupling that with data using uh market trends and market data from national resources, state resources as well as local data that you all can supply us with. And ultimately, this is the schedule that we're looking at, knowing that there are some confines around. This project needed to be completed by August as requested. And so we really envision this as um a partnership with staff for us to kind of have the best practices, what we've seen around the country and state and work with the really local knowledge and talented staff and TDC. And coupling that with, you know, going back and asking community for feedback, showing what the data's saying and really building that story that's Jackson County's success over the next five years and what that'll look like. Um, and we know that that timeline is a constraint for y'all, but we have the capacity to get started as as soon as we get the go ahead. Um, and so we're really excited about that.
Yep, thank you, next slide, please. Um, I will be uh the project manager for for our team and would handle um all the day-to-day back and forth with staff and coordinate um all all the work to be done with with Hadley and her team, with Kimley Horn. Um, I have full capacity to devote all time and resources to this. Um, and I look look forward to that opportunity um to to work closely with with your staff and uh continue to to build those relationships that that I've made here. Uh, next slide, please.
At the root of this plan truly being a reflection of the community priorities, we have built it around um several different touchpoints of engagement um to really make sure we're hearing your voice as commissioners, the council's voices as the TDC residents and really building the layers and layers of priority to make something that's achievable and, you know, visionary. It's a goal, it stretches you, but it's it's realistic and it meets the expectations of your community members. And so we have several touchpoints built into our project that we can kind of dive into more depth if you have questions. But working with leadership as well as staff to understand maybe what they're already doing that's operationalized, but it's not in a plan somewhere, where are their successes? Where, you know, we currently coming a little bit short, where's the room for improvement? As well as coupling that with community vision sessions, that would be a large in-person event with community members. And, you know, really asking the right questions at the right time and asking questions that they can answer. What do you love about Jackson County? Where do you want to see it grow? And then also coupling that with tourism work group meetings. So this would be um larger sessions of different agencies, nonprofits, state parks, outdoor outfitters, a collection of interested stakeholders to make sure we're also getting the perspective of people who are working in this day-to-day. And building all of that together will be the thread of community priorities that this plan is built upon.
Next slide, please.
And coupling with the community voice is the data and the numbers side of things. And so the way that we do this is we complete what's a community overview. So it looks at the demographics of your community, the current planning efforts, the current strategic plan, and really looking at where, where you are now and where you want to grow. And we do this uh, by working with your staff. We also have various tools in-house that we use that provide market potential indicators and other market assessment um, data, as well as being able to geospatially locate some of these trends. So we can look at, you know, what visitor dollars are, where they're being spent, what type of people are spending thi- this money, how long they're staying for, to kind of dial, drill down into really what that looks like. And then we also have the opportunity to use on our side uh, a funding tool that Kimley Horn has through Grant Source to kind of match up the priorities and actions that are outlined in this plan and find some potential other um, income, you know, so it's not just TDC dollars, but what other grants are out there that could help you achieve the marketing goals, infrastructure goals, um, anything that ends up in this strategic plan.
Next slide, please.
And ultimately, all of this comes together uh, into a really easy-to-use document. We like to keep it pretty much like ten to twenty pages, very easy to use. Uh, so that if it's someone coming into your community that hasn't been here before that wants to be able to learn how to use this document, they can. It's something that you can go back and reflect on, and it's something that helps guide the next five years. So as you can see, we use implementation matrices that have who's the responsible party? How is this a time resource effort or is it a money resource effort? And how does that split up? And what are the priorities to achieve first? Um, and we outline this with either uh, transformational goals or strategic priorities, really, like I said, stretching you to grow in the next five years and achieve those goals, but really being, being data-driven behind all of that.
Next slide, please. Um, so a- as we had mentioned before, you know, we, we want to, to help facilitate this strategic plan to align with the county's strategic plan. So we want to re, take a look and analyze all the, the current planning practices that are going on across the county and, and think of ways that we can link back to all of these other plans and, and start building foundational documents that, that build upon each other in, in, in those fashions. Next slide, please. And this is, if we, if we have any questions, as, as we mentioned, we try to prepare a succinct um, presentation as requested. Um, so if you have any direct questions that, that are going back to the proposal, if you don't mind pulling up a page if you have any um, reference and, and that might help us while answering.
Let me ask a question real quick. Um, I've gone through these planning uh, exercises a number of different times for, you know, a lot of different organizations and towards a lot of different goals. Uh, one of the things that you touched on is outreach to different groups, leadership, uh, community organizations, things like that. One of the things that I think is very paramount for those being successful is getting people to participate in those, because it's great to have those meetings, but if no one shows up or you've got limited participation, it's really not as effective as if you have good attendance. How do you, how do you take care of making sure that once those uh, meetings, whether it's a community, leadership, uh, different stakeholders, making sure they participate? What's your approach to that?
Well, I, I mean, I think we could both add here. Um, I think what we would try to do i- is to work with our relationships and make sure that each of our municipalities are engaged and part of this process and, and, and have an opportunity to come to the table. And they're telling each of, e- each of their resident, respective res- residents that these opportunities are coming up. So we, what we would try to do is try to promote, you know, the, the grassroots spread of this thing to get people to come and try to choose locations that, that may be um, additionally helpful to certain sectors of residents to, to make it.
Building off what Jarris said, uh, like he mentioned, we like to have those community champions that help champion the project and advocate it and can help with the outreach effort of the public engagement events. But we do find, so just thinking through some of the different touchpoints we have suggested for this project, a staff workshop, we find um, really offering people multiple ways to give input in one meeting. So offering like there's a place where you can write your answers, there's a small group discussion where you can talk a little bit more. Because we see providing some different outlets for people. Some people, they just want to write their answers down all day long and they never want to talk about them. Other people need to talk it out to give their answer. So we've kind of provided some different outlets there. For the community vision session, a large part of it is the actual outreach to get people there. But once they're there, it's really asking people questions that they feel like they can answer. Um, and so when we do these large sessions around tourism efforts, we usually, we have like a little postcard activity that's where people write a postcard about their favorite place in Jackson County. And then people, you know, there's different like on-the-wall posters where people can illustrate on a map, like this is a place that I love and I want more people to love it, this is a place that I love. But we should be cautious, maybe we need to concert, think about conservation here as well. Um, so we again, a different outlets for oper- for questions, but also asking those questions that they feel like they're able to answer.
Thank you. Commissioner, pick up.
Uh, Jarris, you grew up here in Jackson County, so you're familiar with the, the assets that we have. Lake Seminole, the Mill Pond, uh, the hunting and the caves, you know, everything. Are you going to incorporate all of this into your plan and come up with a marketing plan for it?
We, we, we did, what do we have in for marketing? We.
For the community overview and twill.
Yes. Okay, so yes, we, we imply, we plant, sorry for my, my lack of understanding for that one specific piece. But yes, we plan on incorporating these things, but trying to maintain that balance uh, between overuse and abuse. Like, we understand that there are some resources that do receive an overuse or uh, uh, a perceived overuse by residents, such as like wildlife management areas and, and things of that nature. So some of those things may not be as fully um, I guess, encouraged for use um, if, if desired by, by the residents. But I would say yes, that these things would be included and, and there would be strategic ways that, that could be um, that could come out from this, that things could be spent or planned around to encourage the growth and development around those natural resources and assets in a um, in a conserving way.
And I think, building on that, I think this plan is an opportunity to celebrate those assets and celebrate a lot of really good work that's going on um, with Visit Jackson County. And there's, the website's great, there's the, the great outreach happening. I think this plan is an opportunity to celebrate those moments. And then like he's mentioning, looking for places of where do we balance conservation with recreation? Where do we balance celebrating an asset, but then also what are the hidden gems that maybe need additional support? And I think uh, like he's mentioning, there will be places that perhaps, you know, residents don't want more people to know about because that's their spot. But if that's the case, what are some other areas that we can choose to kind of put, focus infrastructure around or development around so those get elevated? And it's, it's a balancing act, but it'll come through the conversation.
All right. That's all I've got.
One, one other question I've got, uh, again, I've, you know, as an architect, we've answered a lot of these uh, requestful proposals and we utilize a lot of consultants. One of the challenges that we have when we bring consultants on is uh, the communication between ourselves as a prime consultant and a consultant such as Kimley Horn. Very, very familiar with uh, that group, a large group. Wh- where are you out of, which all?
Tallahassee.
Tallahassee, officer, okay, that's good. Um, how do you answer the communication? It sounds like y'all've got a, a good working relationship.
Yes, we, we've had a great working relationship actually since we were in college. So, you know, we've, we've done several projects together. Um, and we, we look to build on, build on that, you know, previous relationship. A- as mentioned, um, I would be the primary point of contact and, and handle the filtration um, out from there.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions?
That's all I've got.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Questions, is that all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so a number, I've got a few questions I'll try and run through pretty quickly. But how many Florida tourism agencies have you worked for, for strategic planning?
Um, I have not worked in the state of Florida for any agencies here.
You got it, okay. Um, let's see here, and then so world or um, anyway, you know, national or international, how many tourism-specific strategic plans have you completed?
Me, I, I've completed eight.
Eight, okay.
In different geographies, Colorado, Alabama, Vancouver, Canada.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, you talked a little bit about finding additional revenue sources through grants. What other revenue sources have you identified for those tourism strategic plans that you've completed?
Yep, so I'm, and those tourism plans, we, we can find funds through general funds. We find grant funding, uh, depending on what the request is. We've also been able to put it into kind of a CIP, long-range budget plan, and then as well as leveraging lodging packs and TDC dollars.
Okay, perfect. Um, for those tourism agencies you've worked with, what size staffing and budgets were you working with, with, with the general range?
Yeah, it's a, varies a bunch. We've done everything from, they don't actually have a staff person, they just have their council or board, to a, a much more robust department of about fifty people. Um, so really, the whole family.
Perfect, great, great range there. Um, you talked a li- a lot about community engagement. Um, one of the core aspects to consider, both for the two of you and for our other um, strategic planning companies online. Um, we, while we have great destinations within Jackson County, ultimately, we make our money based off our regional footprint. Um, what types of partnerships have you done with tourism planning with regional partners? Uh, that way we can be considering not just our community engagement, but how we need to engage with our regional partners.
Yeah, I'm, on past kind of similar efforts, we've worked with other counties nearby that may have uh, different tourism councils. If there is ever like a multi-county agency, we've worked with those, as well as bringing uh, like state parks and Main Street America, partners like that that maybe focus on specific types of assets. Um, and so in this case, I do a lot of work in both Walton and Leon and Gadsden County and have been talking uh, with different arts and recreation partners there to see if there could be some similar kind of coalition or bringing of the minds. And I envision with the tourism work group, that would be a great opportunity to at least start to build some of those partnerships if they don't exist already.
Absolutely, and I, I primarily bring that up because, for example, Tallahassee in 2026 is bringing international cross-country competition in. Pensacola is now the home of the Blue Devils and they're now going to be the training center for an international sailboat um, uh, competition team. So we really want to make sure that we're considering the regional aspect in addition to the community engagement piece. Um, and I think, let's see here, let me make sure. Um, you talked about, you know, looking at community demographics for data. What additional data sources are you going to be looking for to help with the strategic plan?
Yeah, are you asking like the, like sources we use for data or how we go about it?
Um, sources and, and looking at not just community, but also visitor demographics.
Yes, yeah, so the community overview is basically a name of some multiple different inputs. So it's not just looking at who your residents are, but who also your visitors are. And through, um, we mostly use sources from the state or we use Esri or CoStar, depending on what we're, like if it's markets, we're CoStar, if it's Esri, we can get spending data. Um, and then there's also state sources that have more of the lodging data, et cetera. But we use that to build a profile of what your community looks like, who's visiting your community, what are they visiting for, how long are they staying and what are they spending their money on while they're here? And then once we understand that, there's also data that we can pull from the statewide uh, comprehensive outdoor recreation plan that kind of layers in what are the recreational assets people are looking for? And that's um, kind of split up by geography. So in this region of the state, you can tell exactly what people wish there was more of here and what people are utilizing. And, and so there's different sources kind of that come through each of the asset types. So if it's historical and cultural data, we can, we have worked before with local museums and nonprofits or this is like Council of Cultural Affairs or something to gather some more data that they may have. But a lot of it comes from really close staff collaboration and then using the data that we have that's more regional, state, and national.
Perfect, okay, thank you, that's all I've got for questions, I appreciate it.
Very good. Well, okay, on behalf of uh, Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, we certainly appreciate uh, your interest in providing these services to us. And uh, as you've heard, we'll uh, get through the rest of the interviews and uh, uh, go through a ranking process and we'll notify you guys as soon as we can.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, all right, good job. Okay. I think the next group that we'll hear from would be Oak Road Government. Are you online?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, it's uh, Jim Shelton here, can you hear me loud and clear?
Not very loud, can you uh, turn up the volume a little bit?
Yep.
Marie, can we close that door over there?
How do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so just clarification on technical, are you gonna, I pushed some slides, are you gonna push the slides from there or would you like me to do a screen share?
If you can do the screen share, that would be.
Yeah, do the, the screen share, please. And all the commissioners here, okay?
Okay, uh, so, and all, as, that's a tough act to, to follow, they did a fantastic job. Uh, but I am also uh, uh, gonna give you a succinct brief. I think we're given five to seven minutes, so I'm gonna go ahead and just start my uh, clock now and then go from there.
Can you, we've got some members in the audience that can barely hear you. Can you increase the volume a little bit more?
Fred's gonna work on it, it's only coming through this side, it's not coming through the house.
Okay, got it, okay. We're, we're working on that, it's a little bit of a technical issue.
Okay, I'll pause for a sec, uh, I've got it maxed out on my side.
Okay. See, want to go ahead?
Yeah.
Give us just a second. We got our IT expert in here. Try now.
Okay, test, one, two.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, pro- proceed, if you don't mind introducing yourself and, and whoever else will be participating in your uh, presentation.
Okay, all right, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, thanks again. My name's Jim Shelton and on behalf of Oak Road Government, uh, we're super excited to have this opportunity to uh, to share with you and, and learn from you about uh, strategic planning that we offer, especially as it relates to your growth of your tourism. Uh, so basically, this is the agenda, could do some introductions, could talk briefly about uh, one of the questions that was asked was about uh, our accomplishments uh, in Florida. We'll talk about the planning framework, uh, taco, a little bit about stakeholder engagement, but just a little different perspective uh, than the uh, previous group. And then timeline for implementation and then we can get into a, a question and answer session. Uh, so here's, uh, here you guys are uh, on the map. And uh, as you can see, the intent here is to uh, to draw in what we consider to be net new income, uh, as opposed to uh, focusing on trying to get just the wallet share, increased wallet share of your residents. That is our approach to tourism. And we'll talk a little bit about that as it relates to some of the customers we've worked with in Florida and, and highlight that. Uh, what's important also is what our mission is, is to walk with leaders uh, to enable success across lives and businesses, which aligns pretty well, I think, with the mission of the uh, you know, specifically the Chamber of Commerce, which is trying to be a catalyst for robust economy in your region. And uh, as was mentioned earlier by uh, the TDC representative, you know, regional focus is, is, is something to be considered as well. Uh, so Oak Road Government, uh, I am not a resident of Florida, I'm a resident of Iowa. I left, went, joined the Marine Corps for about thirty-two years, uh, was a chief of staff, did a lot of planning, uh, traveled throughout the world, retired, came back to um, small town rural Iowa, uh, worked with um, or started a company with two gentlemen, Arlen and Pete Sorenson, who have uh, a pretty good uh, reputation and establishment within Florida, specifically within the IT community, uh, especially down in Tampa, and also with the uh, um, environmental tourism, if you want to call it that, uh, throughout the region, especially with your uh, the wildlife corridor. Um, so what we've uh, you know, done in the past is we've treated tourism. Um, so, what we've, uh, you know, done in the past is we've treated tourism, uh, and environmentalism, and, you know, nonprofit governmental organizations as they, uh, focused on, it's a business, and, uh, a business has to have resources, people, time, money, to be able to execute whatever plan they come up with, and that's kind of how we're approaching, um, helping the, uh, Jackson County Tourist Development Committee. Uh, so, one of the things that, uh, we would really need to, uh, learn about, and there is some value in having an outside perspective on this, I believe, is to learn about Jackson County's tourism industry. Uh, we did, uh, you know, a little bit of research on what it is that you have, what's amazing is a lot of it is replicated, uh, what happens in rural Iowa. Uh, whether it's, uh, lakes, uh, natural, natural areas, there's, uh, agriculture, there's, uh, you know, uh, transient population, there are folks that, uh, you know, there's probably a youth, uh, exodus to a certain extent in the Panhandle, it's probably the same thing that exists in rural communities throughout the nation. Uh, so, find, learn about the tourism, uh, find potential growth areas, especially in environmental and, and rural tourism. And then I, and then identify what are the key challenges faced by, uh, Jackson County, and then also key opportunities, uh, you know, being a Marine, when you do a map study, you can, or in my opinion, you can already identify, uh, that there are opportunities in your area, uh, and there, you know, that could be drawn upon to help you with your, uh, your net new income derived from tourism. So, Oak Road's accomplishments, uh, specifically, we've had accomplishments, uh, throughout the nation. Uh, we have, uh, customers in Australia, we have customers in Norway as well, but specifically in, uh, Florida, um, we've worked with Archbold, uh, Live Wild, Live Wildly, um, and also with the Flor- Florida Wildlife Corridor, um, to, to allow them to expand and become successful in what it is that they're endeavoring to do through the process that we are trying to, uh, or, or wanting to, uh, go down with, uh, your folks there is this, uh, STRADOP. So STRADOP is a, is a process that is taught by the Patterson Center, which is, uh, James Patterson, uh, is a, um, individual that was, uh, immensely successful, invented the ATM, um, did a bunch of other things as relates to Ford. He was also instrumental in, uh, the DOD's, uh, process for the planning, programming, budgeting, and execution cycle. So he's, he's helped strategic companies, and he's also, the processes helped, uh, mom and pop, uh, type organizations that we help, uh, here in the Midwest as well. There are references, letters of reference, uh, and letters of recommendation in the packet from each one of these organizations that highlights the process that was enabled for them by working with us, uh, at Oak Road. Uh, strategic planning framework, uh, so the proposed approach is, uh, the methodology is in the RFQ package as well. Essentially, uh, it's a process that spends time gathering perspective, uh, then actually does the planning, and then actually executes it. STRADOP is something that is focused on action, it is not focused on creating a plan that sits on a, on a shelf. Um, it is, uh, it is something that is the what's important now type of approach to, uh, planning. Uh, and then also based off of those letters that you're, that are in the package, Oak Road is, uh, our, our primary tenants or trust. Uh, we truly consider ourselves and, and, and market ourselves and, and hold ourselves to standard of being trusted, trusted advisors. And we also have a great understanding of, uh, rural communities, uh, and there are distinctions, uh, as you mentioned earlier in your earlier, um, meeting, you were talking about snowbirds come from Canada coming down. I, I suspect there are quite a few snowbirds from Iowa that head to, uh, Florida as well, but, uh, rural is, is, I think, facing the same challenges, whether it's energy, uh, roads, infrastructure, uh, talented workforce, um, you know, a, a youth exodus, those are all things that we, uh, have a great understanding of. Uh, what you see down on the right, lower right, is the, uh, plan on a page. This is what, uh, uh, other than the other products that produce, that are produced out of this planning process, this gives us, you know, our guest leaders such as yourself, an opportunity to know whether the, the plan is on track or not on track, if there are things that need to be prioritized. It's a, uh, a great executive summary that, uh, is produced on a, each time they have an iteration or a touch point. Uh, stakeholder engagements, uh, you know, it is important to engage in local stakeholders, it's, it is important to understand what it is that, uh, the, the businesses and the residents and the, and the local entities need and desire as it relates to their, their community and their tourism. But was as, what was alluded to earlier was the external stakeholders, there are, um, entities within the state of Florida and in, within that Panhandle region, uh, that could help drive, uh, tourism into your community, and the, the type of tourism that you want. You have, uh, whether it's the military installations that are in that area, whether it's the, uh, environmental, uh, individuals, whether it's outdoor rec folks. I'm trying to identify those that are already interacting with those external stakeholder, or interacting with that community that allows them to drive them to you, as opposed to trying to create, uh, regional or global or, or national, uh, marketing campaign that, uh, they already have a, may have a, a partner, or have a, a part of that you can just benefit from. So external stakeholders are kind of the, uh, we think, and having just looked at the, uh, your plan, both your, uh, tourism strategic plan and also your county strategic plan, we think that may be something that, uh, might be of benefit. The timeline for implementation, uh, what's depicted on the lower right is the actual timeline as it laid out. Uh, what's written is basically, we'll do an initial engagement with key leaders, um, then it's really two and a half days or three days of deliberate planning. Um, it, the first day is all perspective gathering, uh, it's important to make sure that you understand the perspective of where you're at, uh, so that you have a better understanding. Um, there's a tendency in most planning processes to just go up the mountain, uh, with STRADOP, uh, it's a, we use an Asian sort of goes around the mountain, uh, as you ascend. Um, that is immensely more beneficial as it relates to perspective than it is to just charge forth and go up the mountain. Uh, day two is really about trying to figure out where your opportunities are at, uh, where not, you're, you're trying to skate to the puck. You're not trying to replicate something that you've, uh, you know, somebody else has done that, you know, that time may have come and passed. Um, and then, uh, what happens is then we come back from what, uh, essentially is the dovetail, uh, the dovetail is we've given you tools, action initiative plans, we've given you goals, milestones, uh, of what's important, we're making sure that you know how to actually do that and execute that across the staff, so we're not actually giving you a plan, we're actually teaching you how to plan. And then, uh, we actually do, uh, there's scrub one, scrub two, and scrub three. So you're actually, um, essentially buying us for, um, a year, and when I say us, I'll be the primary, uh, point of contact or the primary, uh, a consultant on this endeavor, uh, but you're getting us for a year, uh, because we are, it's not a fire, forget, uh, what we do is we take considerations for your operations, your strategy, and, and interweave the finance piece in there as well. Uh, in our example that we used, or the question that was asked earlier about, um, additional revenue, uh, we've worked with Florida Wild, uh, and, uh, other organizations to, whether it's, uh, QR codes, uh, the head of trails for folks to make donations, on-the-spot donations, whether it's, uh, uh, going after, um, philanthropic individuals or organizations, and then, uh, whether it's going after, uh, grants and other, uh, federal or state programs as well. So, uh, we're not just gonna let you, you know, give you a plan and let you flounder, um. And then, basically, that's it. Uh, Oak Roads, uh, you know, we're dedicated to, through, throughout Florida, and been affected throughout Florida. Uh, we think that we understand what, uh, what your vision is and your strategic plan for the county, and what you've had as a strategic plan for the TDC in the past, and we're ready to, uh, to support, um, so, any, uh, questions or comments? I apologize, I went really long on that.
Thank you, Jim. Um, before I turn it over to, uh, to Kelsey, uh, to ask any questions, any questions from any of the commissioners? Any, any questions? None? Uh, Kelsey, you wanna, if you don't mind, with, if you, you come to the podium so that we can pick that up, or, or do, do it there with the microphone, me the one.
So, Mr. Shelton, thank you so much for touching on some of the questions that I had asked of symbiosis. Uh, my first question is, where in Iowa are you from?
So we are in Harlan, Iowa, which is about forty-five minutes outside of, uh, um, Omaha, Nebraska. And I know everybody was watching the Iowa Hawkeyes, uh, women's basketball team this, uh, this weekend, so, but that's where I'm at.
You couldn't have known this, but I'm actually an Iowa native myself, I'm from Clear Lake, Iowa, so it was exciting to hear that you're from there, but I'm, won't let that persuade my decision-making despite how great Iowans typically are. Um, there is just a couple of questions I have for you. Um, how many Florida tourism agencies have you worked with, and how many tourism strategic plans have you completed?
Uh, so we've worked with, in, in, uh, along the Florida Corridor project, we've worked, I think, seven companies. Um, three of them are highlighted there, and the other four I can provide. Um, as it relates to national, we have, we have not worked with any national, um, tourism agencies.
And of those seven in Florida, are any of those specifically tourist development councils, CBBS, or are those just related to the environmental tourism that you had, uh, touched on earlier?
Uh, so those are, uh, all environmental tourism organizations.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, very good. So any, uh, any follow-up questions from the commissioners? Well, Jim, uh, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, we certainly appreciate, uh, your interest in, uh, providing this strategic planning to, uh, Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and to the Jackson County Tourist Development Council. I think maybe you heard at the beginning that, uh, we'll conclude the last, uh, interview session momentarily, and, uh, and then we'll, uh, go through a ranking, a grading process, and certainly let you, uh, know of, uh, of the results as soon as possible.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
W R T, or Work Marketing.
We got, uh, yeah, Work Marketing Group LLC, uh, Work Marketing, are you online with us?
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner, I am on, this is Jack Wirt.
Okay.
I have my colleague also, uh, online with you today, Don Anderson, and, uh, between us, we'll, uh, make a brief presentation, you, uh, you already have our, uh, uh, our proposal, uh, is your, part of your packet, so we just want to hit some highlights of that and then answer some questions if that's, uh, you know, all right with, with the board.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, if I could share my screen.
That would be helpful.
Bring up my presentation. There we are.
We can see it.
See that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is Jack Wirt, I'm, uh, with the, uh, Work Marketing Group, and, uh, background and experience, uh, over thirty years, uh, in destination marketing. Uh, I've, uh, started, uh, two tourism bureaus here in Florida, uh, managed both of them, uh, over, uh, thirty-plus years, and, uh, developed a strategic plan each and every one of those, those years with those organizations. And I've also done, uh, some additional, uh, information, our, uh, projects, uh, with Don and, and others, uh, other consultants, so, uh, to, uh, give you an idea of what, um, our experience has been, uh, combined, uh, Work Marketing Group, uh, my company, and Don Anderson's company, Destin Consultancy Group, um, some sixty years of combined tourism advisory assistance, uh, that's over three hundred and fifty destination marketing organizations in the US and Canada, fifteen of those are in Florida. Primarily, uh, we have, uh, concentrated jointly, uh, uh, in our careers on strategic planning, uh, destination, uh, promotion planning, uh, DMO operations, uh, uh, having actually run, uh, tourism bureaus, tourism advocacy, uh, international, uh, visitor marketing, and tourism development assessments and, and strategy, uh, uh, programs. Additionally, um, uh, we've, uh, we've added, uh, market research and, uh, sports tourism, outdoor recreation, uh, in both of our careers, and, uh, over half of those advisory assignments have been to rural-based destinations and community, communities similar to, uh, uh, Jackson County. So from my point of view, uh, I mentioned, uh, two, uh, tourism DMOS, uh, that I've, uh, headed up, uh, one in Seminole County, north of Orlando, and then, uh, in the southwest Florida, uh, where I just recently retired from, uh, the, uh, the Naples area Tourism Bureau, and Don has, uh, uh, you know, been with, uh, a Canadian destination as well in, in his career. One of the things we really strive on, uh, in, in all of the interactions we've had with other tourism, uh, organization, it's really developing an, an in-depth knowledge of the destination, um, providing best practices in destination marketing and sales services. And, uh, uh, Don, why don't you, uh, handle the, the next, uh, couple of things on your background? You're, you're muted, you're muted, Don.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners, Don Anderson here.
Good morning.
Um, I'm the executive partner with Destination Consultancy Group that Jack, uh, identified myself earlier. And I've had the privilege of working with Jack over the last fifteen to twenty years in various projects in Florida, but also across the country. But one of the, uh, major things that I had the opportunity to do is work with the Key Trade Association for our, um, for our industry, which is called Destinations International. And in nineteen ninety-two, uh, didn't know it was gonna have the legs it had, but created a new professional development program for those that really want to drive more visitors to their communities, to their counties, and give them the experiences they want. It's called CDME, Certified Destination Management Executive Program, and there is now over five hundred, um, graduates of that program, and a great majority, I would say probably there's about thirty or forty within the state of Florida that have that credential as well. So, I have a research academic background, but also you can see that, uh, from the slides that I'm a practitioner as well. We may have not outlined it other than Jack indicating that I had the opportunity of working with a destination management organization in Canada called Visit Calgary, out there in Western Park. But also, I have been a past hotelier, and, um, also an event operator as well. So, we have a, a vast background, which really says that we spend a hundred percent of our time and effort in advising those within tourism and hospitality. This is a full-time job for us, and, and certainly we're firm believers in long-term plans tying to, um, annual operating plans and making sure that we're setting the right priorities and going forward. So, we're firm believers in having those plans that are research-based, um, and also that we want to make sure that they're going to be executed well, because at the end of the day, we're not about interested in, we're interested in visitors spending more time and returning and telling others, but we want to make sure that we invest our resources, um, well, um, what the TDC has to encourage visitors to come, but also to make sure that we have the right attractions and events in place to help us in that regard. So that gives you a little bit of background on myself and the relationship that Jack and I have had. Uh, this slide here is identifying some of the core elements of our program of work that we would do with the commissioners and with the TDC and the Tourism Department. I think initially, when we talk about orientation and assessment, we want to make sure that we're not just there one time. We have indicated in our proposal that we would be three times on-site with two or three days, but part of that initial is just getting to know Jackson County, its community and its tourism assets, but also what research has been done in the past, any visitor profiles, any research that is regional or even statewide, that it has some type of affinity to Jackson County, but also making sure that, uh, that we're working with, uh, the Tourism Department and But also making sure that, that we're working with the Tourism Department and work that they have done. But also that overall strategic plan that the county has. Fortunately, your strategic plan has recognized tourism. Congratulations in, in that respect, because a lot of counties do not take tourism and look at it as a, as a valued economic development driver, but certainly it can be. And we want to make sure that any of that past work that we've taken a good hard look at of where we are now and then some of the gaps and things that we need to, to ask questions. And the two items that you see there, other than being on-site, is that we want to do some online research. And we have two proprietary surveys that we've used over the years. One is called LEEDO. This is looking at your tourism department, TDC, and, and relating it to key standards. As you know, there's an accreditation for DMOs or what we call convention and visitor bureaus out there. But this is a hundred and forty-two standards that we want to sort of look at what you have now and some of the opportunity from an operational and an organizational approach that we could look at. This is something that we would want the Tourism Department, the TDC members and the Commissioners to respond. It is a closed-ended question, so it's, it's not, even though I may mention a hundred and forty-two standards, there's many things that can be clicked on as opposed to just qualitative, but certainly there's an opportunity to pass on your remarks as well. The other one is called LEED Destination. This is looking at your overall county, the municipalities and your assets, and taking a hard look at the development side, the tourism development, the generators, the potential. And, and getting your input after our first meeting there and what you think are some of the major things that we have now and things where there's real great potential. So this one is more product development-related and also the relationships that the TDC, the Tourism Department of the Board has in relation to the communities and the visitor industry itself and how we can partner. You can see that this secondary and some initial primary research is going to dovetail nicely. We want to make sure that we're abiding by the timeline that you had indicated. And we're prepared by the end of May to have an interim sort of state of the destination, what we found, where are the new directions we feel we should be going and so forth. That gives us, I think, to those that were presenting a good idea where we are now, what are those challenges? What are those opportunities, things that we need to go forward? And that way we can vet it on that second follow-up session that we have with you. And then we're prepared at the end of June to give you that draft strategic plan, which is more tourism destination-based, of which the TDC, the Tourism Department, and of course, the Board of County Commissioners have the privilege of executing and implementing and making sure that we're doing those right things that are going to drive more visitors, but also give us the, the benefits and the, in the, through metrics that we agreed to to make sure that we're measuring the success of what we're doing. And again, that strategic plan is a five-year plan, but it's going to tie back to the regular annual operating program of work that your Tourism Department does. And we want to make sure there's, there's going to be that strong interface at the end, once this plan has been approved. Jack, I know you're going to get into a little more on the specifics as it comes to engagement and making sure this plan is just not done by you and I and just the Tourism Department, but a wider audience.
Right. Our engagement approach would include three onsite visits where we'd actually come to the destination and have face-to-face interviews with tourism staff, the TDC members and the Board of County Commissioners. And then input sessions while we're in town with community and tourism industry stakeholders, really reaching into the community so that these tourism industry stakeholders and the community at large really understand this isn't just a tourism plan. This is a destination plan that includes the industry. Industry has input into it. It's really their plan to move the Jackson County area further in the next five years in where they are in attracting visitors to the community. We, we see, again, tried to stay with the timeline and the RFP. Looking at the end of July, that may slip a little bit depending on the time factor of selecting the final bidder, successful bidder for this. We hope it's us. We certainly want to do that. And we're prepared to, to deliver on the timeframe that was in the RFP. A little more about.
Jack, I just want to reinforce to the Commissioners that that engagement approach, if you go into our formal proposal, that there's twenty activities that we'll be doing on-site, those first and second visits, which gives us the depth of the information and the analysis that we'll need, both primary and secondary, to make sure that what we're building together with you really is going to make that difference. So I just wanted to reinforce that the details on that engagement is within that, within our formal proposal that we presented to you. Jack?
Okay, thank you, Don, for adding that. Work Marketing Group, and with me as the CEO, I will be the project director and the key assignment contact for your tourism staff. This is a full-time focus on tourism and hospitality and destination marketing consulting. I've personally helped thirteen different tourism bureaus in Florida with their various strategic planning, plans of several different kinds. And that's certainly been my focus for the last thirty-plus years. And together, Don and I, in our organizations, have completed over two hundred and fifty destination tourism strategic master plans over the past twenty-five years. This is our business. This is what we live and do every single day. I did it every day for thirty-plus years, actually running a tourism bureau. And since then, I have been delegating all of my time to helping other destinations do exactly the same. Our planning really includes strong community visitor industry engagement. As I mentioned, all of those input meetings that we have in, in your area are simply to gather that we want to hear from the industry, we want to hear from the community and, and build a plan that really makes sense for Jackson County. But it doesn't stop there. Once we deliver the strategic plan, we don't just walk away. We will be active, hands-on guidance with your tourism department, with the TDC, coming back and making sure that the, the final plans that get implemented into an annual marketing plan for each of those five years really relates to the early strategies that we put into this plan and, and really are able to assign total engagement with, with everybody and delivering things that will truly grow tourism in, in Jackson County. One of the things that I wanted to share with you before we close, and this, these destination blocks really were developed by a friend of both Don and mine. Maura Gast runs the Irving, Texas CBB. And this is what he, she came up with. And we strongly believe this is, this is what we're helping to develop in Jackson County as well. If you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people also want to live. And if you build a place where people want to live, you've really built a place where people want to work as well. And if you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where businesses need to be. And if you build a place where businesses need to be, you build a place where people need to visit. It's really a full circle, but it really does begin with that first visit. People don't just wake up this morning and say, we want to take a vacation in Marianna, Florida. They need to at least have some basic information and go and see it for themselves. So that business of coming to the area, that visit begins with tourism destination, marketing and promotion. That's what we feel we can put together for Jackson County in a strategic plan that will encompass five years of, of activity, changing a little bit every year. And we want to be there as, as part of the team to build that. So Commissioners, we're ready to get to work right away. We stand ready to, to start as soon as you make your decision. And we certainly are now open for questions or comments.
Thank you, Jack. First of all, you mentioned that you would be up in Jackson County doing an assessment of our community and our resources. I think you mentioned three trips, two to three days each time. Would that actually be you and Don coming up, or would it be some of your staff?
It'd be Don and I.
Okay, very good. As far as your assessment and of our resources, of our potential visitor increased resources, what are some of the tools that you actually use to do that assessment?
Well, I'll let, let Don chime in, chime in here in a minute, but he, he did quickly mention in his comments that we're going to use all of the secondary research that's already out there. There's so much, there's a breadth of information out there that will include Jackson County. And so we'll rely on those kinds of studies that are already in the marketplace. Get an early handle on it. But Don, why don't you talk a little more about the, the research? That's really his specialty. So talk about that if you would.
Please, pleased to respond to that. Commissioners, the very first day, obviously, we want to work very closely with your tourism department and then, of course, with the TDC members and have conversations, but we need to get out there and do an orientation of your county, including your municipalities, your communities. And then from your perspective at this point in time, what are the key tourism visitor generators that are bringing people to Jackson County at this point in time? So that whole show and tell, spending time and going across all parts of your county is going to be pretty important. That's going to give us a real appreciation and not only seeing it, but also the potential that we could grow. Because we're firm believers, yes, we can have business and leisure visitors coming. And, but you need to segment those markets. So it comes down to leisure visitors. What's their primary reason in coming? But then also what are their secondary activities that they're doing? So maybe some of the secondary information will be helpful, but I think through personal interviews, not only with the TDC Tourism Department and yourself, but others within the industry who are stakeholders, we're going to get a real good consensus of where we're at at this point in time, tourism and where we probably should be going in the future. So that's going to take at least a couple of days. But we did indicate the follow-up because we're a firm believer. You just can't build a strategic plan in one day. There's a lot of that stuff going on. I think we need to reflect on things. We need to come back and continue to build on what we found and vet and make sure that everyone has a say on where we should be going. Because we're hoping that this plan isn't just the ownership of the Tourism Department and the TDC, that it really is, as Jack indicated, a destination plan where all those that are directly or indirectly looking after visitors and the communities themselves feel that's their plan. So unless we're out there engaging and seeing what is happening now, that would not make sure or would not indicate that the plan would be appropriate. So that's what our assessment would be over and above that online survey that I indicated to you, LEED Destination, which is eighty standards, looking across ten sectors. And it's not just tourism-related. It really gets into the, 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 the infrastructure. It's going to get into the sort of the, the health and safety issues and concerns that could be out there. And just what we have, the whereabouts that we have to be able to, to make sure that we can get our fair share of visitors coming to Jackson County and its, in its communities.
Thank you for that detailed response. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Not.
Kelsey, anything you'd like to ask?
I think a lot of my questions for the last two groups were covered, but there was a couple of pieces I wanted to touch on. How will you make sure that we're engaging with our regional stakeholders to make sure that we're figuring out more ways that we can bring in visitors from our major destinations surrounding Jackson County?
Well, I think first of all, Kelsey, what the thing that we want to do when we come up there for our initial visit, we're going to really kind of be like visitors and we want some input from you and your staff of where, where we should go, what we should see, what we should experience and so forth. And then the input you can give to us of what other communities are already possible partners with what you want to do. One of the, the projects that I've been working on is actually up in the Panhandle with the eight counties that have been working together for a long time. That Northwest Florida Regional Council is, is one of the clients that I've been working with. Primarily looking at international marketing because we really thought that there was a real opportunity to bring even more visits, visitors from, from out of the area. I think the point is, is really important that you don't just get it from the region and, and from the, from the locals. Your focus is going to meet much broader than that. And over the five years that this plan covers, it's going to really identify new markets to go after and new regional partnerships that, that we can help you develop.
Thank you. My last question, you had on your slides your work with convention and visitors bureaus. We are getting ready to open our own convention center. And with that, we are going to meet, we have a committee that's put together to help with some of the planning and implementation of that. Will your experience within the Convention and Visitors Bureau play a factor or help us with developing plans about developing additional tourism in the meeting and sales aspect? We've, we've got a really great grasp on leisure and outdoors tourism, but that is a, a large investment that we're making that we want to see have some great operational standards. Will you be able to include aspects in our strategic tourism plan about the convention center?
Absolutely. And that's a really important segment of visitation. It's something that I've worked on certainly here in Collier County to, to grow in our area. Although we don't have a convention center, we have some major hotels with major meeting space. So that's been a big part of, of growth. It's about thirty percent of our visitation now in this area. And it was ten percent when we first started promoting the area. So we know how to do that. That's really an important part. And it's more than just the, the meetings market. It's also the, the, the leisure groups that can come to the area as well. It's sports events. It's the kinds of things that, that you may have some infrastructure for that could help support in the future. And we, we want to look at all of that. So yes, very much so. This will be much broader than just leisure.
Thank you. That's everything I've got.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey. Okay, Don and Jack, certainly appreciate your presentation. And as you probably previously heard, we'll go through a process of ranking the three presenting firms in fairly short order. And I'm certain that Kelsey will notify all of the responders as to the results of the grading process. And on behalf of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and all three responders, we certainly appreciate your interest in Jackson County and and your efforts that you put forth in putting together your package and participating in the interviews.
Thank you so much, Chairman and, and County Commissioners for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Okay, with that being said, I don't think there's really anything else that we need to do at this time regarding this. So we'll close out this special meeting. I'll ask the board, it's eleven thirty. Do you want a break for lunch and come back after lunch? Or do you want to?
Mr. Chairman, I suppose we push on. Make take, take a five-minute break.
And come back and finish out the agenda?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Is that good with everybody? Good with that as well? A minute break, we'll re-adjure. Hey, let's go ahead and call this regularly, regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners back to order when we left off at our special meeting, we had completed item number seven, and we were on item number eight, RET, which is Board Approval to Award twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, dash nineteen, the Pusser Road Affordable Work Housing Development Project to Northwest Florida.
Yes, so on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, we placed an RFP ad for proposals. And on March twenty-eighth, we received one proposal from Northwest Florida Limits to Delo Sea, also known as Ross Coleman Homes. We believe it is in the best interest of the county to accept their proposal, move forward with the sale of Pusser Road property for, to initiate affordable work for the homes.
As you recall, we had included in that RFP a minimum purchase price of the property at five hundred thousand.
Yes.
What was the amount that they proposed in their proposal?
Eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
And the idea behind that was to take was to take that, those dollars and actually use those to get utilities to the site and make the site more ready for development, potentially.
Yeah, and they did also put in there in comments to, I'll just read it. We propose eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars total purchase price, subject to zoning and utility availability, as well as fully executed purchase and sales agreement. So there'll be some negotiation within that eight thirty-seven, but that was their proposal.
Well, the city is going to provide the water and sewer for that. So are they paying for that?
I don't know that, has there been discussions with the city?
Part of some of the grant projects we have going on out in that area. So the idea is to extend, uh, city water and sewer through the Endeavor property coming up behind the current sheriff's office, the DJJ building, connecting the Pusser Road, and then allowing that availability at the housing property.
So by taking action, a, action today and approving this to award this to, to Northwest Florida, this will allow us to move forward with those negotiations and with those conversations.
You'll bring those back to us.
That's right. So that's where we'll get Michelle involved to start working on, you know, the purchasing contracts and all the fine print for that sort of thing.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Commissioner Branch, you got a question?
Is there anything in there about the special taxing districts like those before?
No, there's not. The only, I guess, thing similar to that would be the, there'll be initiating an HOA. So that'd be part of the housing project, but nothing as far as taxing district or anything like that.
The HOA is there.
That's right.
Now, they, the HOA is, it specifies in there that there will be an HOA. And that's them. They set that up. We don't have to get involved in it, which we shouldn't be involved in.
We don't want to be involved in it.
Nope.
Make sure there wasn't something in there about taxing districts.
I looked at their houses, the plans, and they look pretty good.
All of the discussions that I, as the chairman, have had with them and staff have been very positive. They seem to be genuinely interested in this area, and they seem to be genuinely interested in this type of community, a smaller community located right along I-ten. It just seems to fit their model for the type of development that they want to do.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve this request.
A motion from Commissioner Peacock and a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments here, none of those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine is Approval to Award Shangri-La Selective Debris Removal to Presley's, Mr. Daniels.
Yeah, I apologize. That's.
It's okay.
Pages.
Page three thirty-seven.
So this project is part of the Phase Three Stormwater Project for the Jackson Blue Spring property. And so what this scope of work is going to entail is selective removal of hurricane-damaged debris, as well as additional removal to allow access from Jackson Blue Springs up to Shangri-La. There'll be creation at a later time of a boardwalk that'll kind of go over the wetlands area. That's all been delineated. We're working through the permitting process. But we bid out the selective demo and the low bidder was Presley's. And we recommend award fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars. This will also include some of the demolition up at the, the building itself. So we'll be removing some of the out structures, you know, kind of the dilapidated walls and pouring and things of that nature, as well as the, basically removing the, the, the shell of the structure, getting back to just the finished slab of the alters.
My question is, so we're opening a trail up. We've got a problem with them going up there now, jumping in. What are we doing to preclude that?
I mean, there'll be handrails, uh, fixed to the upper overlook section.
So they extend on it?
Right. And there's no stopping. There's, that's the bottom line.
No, 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 you can put some.
Also asking that as part of this, once that's done and we start, because we are going to be encouraging more, more visitors up there is to put post signage, you know, no jumping. I mean, at least that helps.
Well, yeah, reliability, but they'll do it. So I think I read that they are going to take the trees out, the ones that are down low in the way.
Yep. So there's a, a limitation based on size. So anything over or under, I believe it's six-inch D V H is going to be sawed off and then anything.
No, no, I'm talking about the ones in the water.
Oh, yes, absolutely. So damaged trees in the water, as well as the, the rebar that the old walkway, floating walkway was attached to the rocks, that'll also be removed.
Any idea of when you're going to build the handrails and that type of stuff to keep them from?
Well, it'll be obviously after the demolition, so that'll be in.
Is it possible you can put up like a six-foot chain link fence or something up there to keep them off?
It's possible, yeah.
But we need to look at it.
I'll do what?
Put something up, a barrier of some sort, because.
I mean, you don't, I mean, you don't want a chain link fence up there. That's going to look like.
Well, what are you going, fine with me if you build something nice. But you want to put something up to prevent them from going up there and diving in. Unless we're going to open that up for diving, you know, for them to do it, which I think is wrong.
I mean, we've had signage, I've had hog panels, I've done cables, I've done everything you can think of. And it's, you know, if they want to get out there and jump, that's, that's what's going to happen. So we just got to do our best to warn them of the hazards. And while they do it in the days, it's their responsibility.
I hate to buy one.
Okay, we'll get a motion.
I move to proceed with this.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Branch to approve the contract. Second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments here, none of those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number ten is Board Approval of Change Order Number One Charm Road, Mr. Daniels.
So during the course of construction for the DEP grant we received for Charm Road, we did some scope mods or change orders for the construction. This change order with the grant agreement actually amends the scope changes into the grant, so everything matches up.
Formally, formally bends it makes. Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. I asked a question just for commissioners' information. If the homeowners that were most, most adversely impacted by the, the situation prior to this were happy, and, and the answer was that they were no news is good news, I guess, is whatever. Maybe they're, maybe they're satisfied.
We did immediately after construction, we did get word from their attorney that said they were, they were satisfied and everything looked good. We've had, have had some pretty significant rain since and have not heard anything. So we're assuming everything's going good.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, the second from Commissioner Branch, is that correct? All those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven is Board Approval of Amendment four thirty-nine for the lift station generators.
Yes, sir. So this agreement is to amend the entry or amend an increase by federal funding by one hundred thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and forty-five cents. This is due to when we bid it last year, the bids came in overdue, so we requested an increase in funding. And this amendment takes that increase of funding into account.
This is to use bypass pumps?
Well, we're amending the funds for generate, for generators, and we're going to go through the change process, scope mod for changing into bypass pumps.
I have a question. In my book four twenty-one, I see non-federal cost one hundred and eleven thousand four forty-seven fifty. Is that something we've got to match or what is it?
So this is, like the critical facilities, this is HMGP with C D B G match. We're using the state, state matching funds.
I thought that's probably what you were doing. Yep. I make a motion to approve it.
A motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions? Comments here, none of those in favor of the motion, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number twelve is Board Approval of Agreement H ten sixty-one for Pusser Road, Mr. Daniels.
So this agreement is for the construction phase of Pusser Road through the HMGP. The current project amount is nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand seventy-three dollars. HMGP is funding up to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand with an additional forty-one thousand dollars, forty-one thousand five hundred available for SRMC activities. The county is responsible for up to two hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars through the acquired match. And this will be on the Pusser Road section from Highway seventy-three to Wind Road.
This is to help mitigate the flooding issues at that road and then also the flooding issues of that low area that I call LC demand heights that's causing problems with some of the residents and receptive tanks and drain fields. And this hopefully will rectify, I don't see Brett here, but this will take care of those flooding issues and get that water directed to the Schiphol River.
That's intended.
So where is this money coming from? The two hundred, whatever we got to come up with, two forty-four?
I believe that would be in.
Set aside for that. Your mark. I make a motion.
Restraining it, there's drainage culverts under Pusser Road. There's also drainage culverts under seventy-three and.
That needs to be big. That needs to be big.
And it's been an ongoing problem for a long time.
I second that.
Yeah, got motions from Commissioner Peacock, the second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions or comments here, none of those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, Board Approval of Lease Agreement with Chamber of Commerce for Space at the Russ House, Mr. Daniels.
So this agreement is for designated space at the Russ House for the Chamber of Commerce. The lease price is four hundred dollars per month. Agreement is good for one year with two additional one-year renewals optional.
How much are they paying now? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this request.
Got a motion from Mr. Peacock, second from Mr. Crutchfield. Any other questions? Hearing none of those in favor of the motion is stated. Hearing none of those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, which we ought to take care of. Item number fifteen is board approval of a letter of support for Sunland Forensic, Mr. Daniels.
Yep, so this came up a little bit late, but it was already mentioned to Alan, but we want to submit a letter of support from the county to the agency for persons with disabilities for, you know, just the support for future funding to need the construction of these forensic facility that we're opposing at the Sunland site here in Mariana Ford.
Motion from Commissioner Branch.
That's it.
Second from Commissioner McKinney, any other questions? Comments, hearing none of those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, uh, anything from the chair's office? Okay, thank you. Michelle. Brett?
I do have a couple of things.
Sure.
I probably should have mentioned this at the beginning of today, but since two thousand and eight, the second Tuesday of April is known as Be Kind To Lawyers Day. So we like to recognize Madam Attorney Jordan, got her some flowers here, so.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. And then secondly, we've gotten a request from the Chrome Rehab Facility for, they have a need to extend or expand bedding for people there. So they have a need to extend the two-inch water line to increase the fire suppression within a certain section of the school. And they've asked if we could assist in funding, they've got it quoted, came out to six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Michelle has reviewed it and feels that it is adequate to cover under some of the opioid funding. If the board would see fit, we have two options to either we could pay the invoice or depending on how the court would like to do it, allow them to pay and then us just reimburse, they are a, you know, registered nonprofit, so just curious if you would allow it and then two, how it's like to proceed.
So we, uh, Clay, does it make any difference to you how we handle that, whether it's reimbursed or paid if it's more than so chooses to do this?
Isn't that in the city?
It is in the city.
So why are we paying to put a city water line in?
Well, it'll be a, a private water line for the Chrome Facility and the correlation is using the opioid funds since they are a rehab facility for drug users and just with.
And I think that allows them to more or less double the occupancy.
It'll add seventy-five more beds.
And I think they have seventy-five now.
Right.
And it goes a hundred and fifty.
And I, I will say this, the city of Varian, because we were somewhat involved in some of the initial planning, the city of Varian, it did, uh, there, pretty big expense to get the water line up to the old dorm, uh, for Chrome, should they've already, you know, they've already invested in this project pretty heavily.
I make a motion that we'll, we'll like utilize the opioid funds to pay for that water line.
Does it make any difference which way we handle it?
I, I don't, I can't see it being.
You wanna. Including your motion, whether we pay for it or?
Are they, are they already?
Submit the bill to.
And everything, I just don't know if it fits our purchase and.
That's right. So I have received a quote from a company, I don't know if they solicited multiple. I think it would be best if they would, you know, deal with the contractor and then we would reimburse him.
Is that your motion?
I do.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? Comments here, none of those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, that motion carries unanimously.
Uh, we'd like to give an update on a topic that came up to the board through other channels a couple of weeks ago. I spoke with members from F D E P and Pensacola yesterday about the Blue Springs Mobile Home Park, just to try to get an idea of where they were. So the property has changed hands and the new owner has hired Castleberry Environmental as their water operator and the state has given them until May first to get into compliance, they're still under boil water notice. But their, D E P is working directly with David to get everything, you know, back up and running. So I know that was a hot topic, Mr. McKinney brought up, so just wanted to pass that along. Yes, sir. That's it for me.
Okay, well, just remember for the rest of the day, please be kind to Michelle. Mr. Peacock?
Um, yes. Brett, you put a traffic counter out on Seminole Drive?
Yep.
Do you have the traffic count?
Had it ready last meeting, you didn't bring it over.
I was in a hurry.
Let me see here, I can do some more figuring. We have had a traffic counter out there for.
While, while you're looking for that, Charlie, can you come up for a minute?
I got a call from some volunteer firemen.
Yes, sir.
And they were concerned about callouts.
Yes.
Now, my understanding is the volunteer firemen basically operate under an agreement with their cities or towns.
Correct.
And we have an interlocal agreement with them.
For the unincorporated areas.
For unincorporated areas.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what I am hearing is that they're not being paged out to automobile accidents in their towns unless in the, apparently the sheriff's office made the decision that they would not page them out unless there's an entrapment or a fire. And I was wondering if, have you changed your policy?
Yes, sir, I've not.
So you have nothing to do with their page out, callouts?
Uh, I do not. I, I've not heard of any changes to be made. When I was contacted this week, that was the first knowledge that I've had of something changing, but we certainly have not changed anything on our end.
Well, wouldn't it be beneficial from your perspective if these people show up, they carry trauma bags? They can stop bleeding, they may be able to resuscitate someone, you know, do CPR?
Historically, in their respective municipalities, you know, it's, it's left up to their town council or, or volunteer.
Yeah, but from a safety perspective, it looks to me like I'd rather, if I was hurting and bleeding, I'd rather have someone show up with a trauma bag where they could stop the bleeding and maybe, uh, kind of give me CPR while I'm waiting for you to get there, which may be twenty, thirty minutes. Obviously, if one of our ambulances is standing by, it wouldn't be that long, but if you're on the other side of the county.
And I think there's utility in having any type of responder on scene, from a public perspective, the, um, safety, not only for the people involved, but for the community, having a visual of having a responder on scene within minutes, um, changes that, that view of the accident or incident scene, so.
Okay. Well, I think there's a lot that these volunteers do. And I had two, two different units call me complaining that, you know, they were not being paged out when there were accidents in their jurisdiction.
Historically, anything that fell within the municipalities, you know, we, it was left up to them to decide whether they want to go or not. And certainly we want them to, you know, most of them want to be paged accordingly. We have not changed anything on, on the county fire rescue side, we encourage them to, you know, we'll support them in any way in their municipality that we can. So, but I advise them, I received the same call, I advise them that they need to follow up with, with the sheriff's office since that's all housed under them.
So we don't have any explanation from the sheriff's office to.
I, I don't know anything.
It's not like the breakdown, the complication between the, you know, fire, fire rescue and sheriff, and it would sound like to me. Yeah, I, I, I advise them to follow up with, you know, ask for a meeting, you know, if they feel like that they're not being paged. You know, I, I, that's what I advise them to, I said, you know, I think that I'm in, in my interaction with the communication center, it's been very positive, so certainly I think there's an issue that they'll be willing to sit down and speak to them on it and trying to iron out whatever issue, if there is one, so.
Well, from my perspective, I want them to get it straight.
Absolutely.
Uh, and Brett, the sheriff was supposed to have been here today to give us a briefing, but for some reason he's not here. I would have brought it to his attention. Can you follow up with him?
I will, and I'll add to, like Charlie said, and this comes up every few years, really, it seems like we'll have a span of time. But just encourage to every, you know, volunteer fire chief or department to utilize self-dispatching. If they hear of an issue that they feel like they can assist, they have full authority to respond. And that gets it on the call log and that, you know, creates a card for that department. Additionally, and I don't, again, I don't know the full details, but if any changes were made, I feel like it would be part of the priority dispatch and how they are delegating resources based on the need. So they have a questionnaire when someone calls in for nine-one-one, you know, is anyone entrapped, is anyone injured, is yada, yada, yada. And, you know, there are times where there's no road blockage, there's no severe injuries, there's, there's none of that sort of stuff. So to the new protocols, that may not necessarily justify our response. So that might be some of the breakdown or laps in training or, or whatever it is.
Can we just get a response from the sheriff's department?
Sure.
Explanation would.
Yeah, I, I would like to know what's going on, whatever it is. Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Um, did you come up with Seminole Drive?
Yes, so three hundred and seventy-two and a half vehicles a day. So that is obviously the only in and out for that subdivision that encompasses, you know, residents, contractors, all sorts of stuff. So we ran this from first part of January. This is about fifty-six day range total average, so well over three hundred vehicles per day coming in and out of that Seminole Drive area.
The road needs some work done on it.
Seminole, Seminole.
Yes, and I don't know, I know that Baxter's probably gonna be out in there in the next couple of weeks doing Appalachia Trail because resurfacing it. Can we get with them and see how much it would cost to put like an inch and a half of asphalt on Seminole?
We could, um, that was a bid option on the, the two A sewer phase when it was originally bid, I guess.
I, I know it was.
Three, four years ago.
It got changed.
And the fund, the grant wouldn't cover it and the county at that time decided not to spend, it was two hundred, well over two hundred thousand dollars at that time. And one of the biggest issues with it is different than the Spring Chase project that we're just doing overlay is the base material on Seminole is the main issue. And so what that was encompassing was full depth reclamation, you know, building the back, building the base back up and lifts to kind of try to recompact and put asphalt on top. We could absolutely do an overlay of asphalt, but the same issues are just gonna surface in a matter of.
Well, if you went out there, there's, I, I agree with you. There are some spots that we need to go out there and dig out and redo, bring it back up. But I still would like to know, since they're already out there, what they, what it would cost.
Okay, so we've measured it.
It is one of the busiest roads in the county.
Okay, um, so we did measure it and we can get with Scott, with Baxter's and, you know, see if they'll put a number on it while they're there and hopefully we could have that back by the second meeting of the month.
All right. Cypress Park Playground Equipment.
Yes, sir.
Well, back before the hurricane, right?
No, it was part of the hurricane funding, we had about two years.
But it's still in the box, we need to get it up. When are you gonna put it up?
Started yesterday, swing set is erected, we're working on the platforms and getting the, you know, the slide and everything else put up.
All right, I appreciate that. And grass cutting. I'm gonna have to go get me a herd of goats to get, cut the grass in my district. What's going on?
So we only have, at, at this time, and we're working on hiring, we only have four personnel on the right-of-way mowing team. We have a new director supervisor, however you wanna phrase it. So what we decided to do, since we don't, didn't have enough and likely won't, never really did have enough to put the two in each district because it was intended. But what we decided to do was take those four operators, they're running directly behind the litter contract and they're just doing one full swipe at a time, rather than to have the four different pockets of the county that's being worked on. And that is doing two things, it's not, it's reducing the amount of litter that's being cut by the, by our operators because they're right behind the litter contractor. And then two, from just an ease of operations, we've got one supervisor that has the same team in the same place. So when they're, you know, feeling up and we're doing repairs and doing, you know, all the, the support aspect of the operation, it's a lot more effective and, yeah, economical.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying about having all four of them together. But, you know, last, in the past, having those tractors in our district, mowing, has been good. It cut down on the complaints we get. So how, what are we doing to advertise and try to get more operators?
The same thing as always, I mean, those are advertised on the county website, we put on, you know, we do Facebook last year or so often, we go in the local paper. We have some transfers from within the county and even within the road and bridge department, so they're open and available, um, like anything else.
All right. So if I can go find two men, y'all hire them and put them on the tractors in my district?
No, not necessarily.
Well, then.
We don't, we, we work for the whole county, so.
Well, I know you do, but I need somebody cutting in my district, I don't, these other people might know.
Yeah, I heard the thing about, you know, they gotta start somewhere, if they start in your district, then.
Well, but in the past.
You know, what to get, what to get around.
Past, we had two tractors assigned to our district. And that's was the way the program was set up. We bought the eight tractors to have people in all four districts and those two tractors were to keep them mowed and it worked out good. I see, and I, I know y'all are short on people, but I can see that the, we're gonna, you're gonna get a lot of complaints.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, you know, what happens spring of the year, all the grass grows up at the same time. All right, once they start, wherever they start, once they start and they work to one end of the county, then by the time they get through there, they may, like I say, be a short-handed and gonna be running behind. But the grass being cut down there and not gonna be as high is.
You're gonna wind up, if you had two tractors in your district, you would find it and only take probably two or three weeks and they're, they're over your district.
Another problem with that is.
Coming the way it's going, it might be a month and a half, two months.
But another problem with that is, is that now that we redistrict, really, there's five districts now.
Yeah.
Well, I, I know.
So, I mean, you know.
The roads didn't change though.
No, but.
Yeah, but the, these districts wouldn't work, those three.
Well, you would, they would just go back and be mowing all of the roads.
Have you estimated what the, what the time cycle, timeframe of the cycle is now?
I don't know, but the, the, so staying right behind the litter contractor, they're getting a full cycle, um, well within a month, sometimes three, four weeks or three weeks.
When you say full cycle, the entire county?
Yes, sir. So obviously mowing's gonna be slightly slower, um, but.
Four to five weeks maybe.
This has been proposed as the most economical and efficient, um, when we talked to people that, you know, are in the mowing industry. Collins, by once, when I told him what our plan was tackling it this spring, he was very excited and said, you know, from the private side, if he was bidding on it, that's exactly what he'd do, put four or five together to work in tandem. You can do your main roads and have one or two lagging, get the side roads and do a full cycle. I mean, even when we had it last couple of years with two in each or, you know, we're always gonna have one or two people out. So not everyone was in there, we are seeing with this group, uh, more hour per day, so that'll catch up some of the lag time as well as, um, when the, uh, with the equipment that's starting to get some wear and tear. So we have one mower that is completely trashed basically, so we'll never get back to eight without spending quite a bit of money. And I just, if I could bargain with you, if y'all give us, give us two months and let's see how it goes before we start changing, I mean, if we don't get it staffed, it's really irrelevant, but for now, I think this is the best option moving forward.
Really, is, uh, when you're working them together, you're supervised more and or two?
So what we ended up doing was we have, uh, the supervisor is inmate certified, so he's got a crew of inmates. So not only are we running the four mowers together, we have a lot of mowers going behind them, so the inmates are being able to tag behind. So not only are we running the four mowers together, we have lawnmowers going behind them, so the inmates are being able to tag behind and get around guardrails real tight, get up tight against the signs, and it's a much more complete job now than it ever was since the county's been.
For clarification, right now, that is happening on non-D O T paved roads, not in the cities.
Correct.
So I mean, that, that pretty much covers what you're talking about. Non-D O T maintained roads, paved roads that are not in, in the municipalities, not being maintained by the municipalities.
That's right.
County paved road.
And so how about this, I mean, we'll do, uh, I mean, I'll, we can do some calculations, we'll come up with how many miles per day or per week and we'll kind of come up with some metrics that we can provide to you guys. Um, I don't know that I'll be able to go back in time and figure out how much we were covering, um, but with some uh new advances in our equipment through GPS and all that, working with John Deere, we're able to get a lot more data from the efficiency of the workers. Um, so I would, rather than changing anything or anything like that, I think, let's, let me just communicate more openly with you guys as to how effective it is and if we see that it's not being, you know, handled the best, then we can go a different route.
Where are they right now?
Another thing I think would be helpful for all of us would be kind of a, an idea of geographically where you're gonna be working.
Uh, yeah.
So if we get a call, we can say, you know, give me three weeks, they'll be there, you know, what, just so we know where they're working and where they're going.
So right now, we're gonna be west of two thirty-one heading north towards Hamilton, is that about right? No, they say already ahead of that.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they are coming soon too, right?
Oh, I saw you somewhere.
Okay, so making the loop, coming back this way, okay?
Well, they're going over around Malone and Bascom.
I know, they're gonna make that.
That's what I. Well, I'm gonna be looking for, give some help.
They go get that next time.
That's exactly what happens.
This will probably be life.
Yeah.
Got anything else from Commissioner Peacock?
That's all I got.
Commissioner Branch?
Uh, one thing, you asked me uh the other day when we were talking about the opioid settlement money and how this was gonna go here and this was gonna go there, uh, we did have a meeting and then I called uh, I called some counties around and some of our neighboring counties, what they did is they split that money, whoever, how much it was, and it does some, it, it declines in some years, it, it'll go up in a few, a year or two and then it'll back decline. But they basically split it up between uh fire and rescue and law enforcement. What y'all wanna do, but that's, that's what I found out.
Which counties did you talk to?
Washington County, Holmes County and uh.
Jameson?
I think I talked to guests, I'm not, yeah, I think so. That's how they do it.
What we keep in mind. Mr. Crutchfield?
I'm here at that.
Mr. McKinney?
Uh, just one thing, Brett, um, I'm gonna begin with you about, they got an issue with Mount Table Road, we're gonna have to do an assessment for its fee or maybe a signage or something, but we'll be getting together on that.
Okay, sure.
That's about all I have.
Okay, Clay, anything? Okay, so if there's nobody else, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, we've got County Board of County Commission, everybody.